Let's go ahead and call this a regular meeting of the South San Francisco City Council to order for this Wednesday, March the 24th, and we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Coleman?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nigales?
Here.
Mayor Adiego?
Here.
And we can move down to agenda review. Mr. Futrelli changes for tonight?
No changes per se, but I would ask to take a couple of items out of order if we could, given that we have the director of the airport giving a presentation. If we could move item 16 up to the top of the agenda, out of respect for him, so we could handle that right after that. And then I would suggest we move item 13 up on the agenda, the naming of various facilities, given that I believe we probably have a few honored guests in attendance. Other than that, the, no changes on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Mike, it's very kind of you. Do you want to have 16 after the presentation by Ivor Sotero?
I would recommend that. Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Any announcements from your staff this evening?
We do have a couple of wonderful things this week happening. There's a groundbreaking Friday at 10:00 a.m. of our Stormwater project and new ball field facility, but due to COVID, I'm happy to recognize that publicly, but ask people not attend. There's also some other events on Friday that others may want to talk about. Otherwise, no announcements from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mike. And Rosa, we can, if Director Sotero has joined us, we can go ahead and start with our first presentation.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, presentation on San Francisco International Airport Update and Airport Noise Insulation Program. Airport Director Ivar Sotero, and I believe he's been transferred as panelist.
I have. Good evening. Boy, your technology is just working flawlessly. Thank you.
Good evening, Director. How are you?
I'm good. Good to be with you tonight. All right, let's see if I can keep it going. I'm going to share my screen here and walk right through the presentation.
Director Sotero, I wanted to mention to you that hopefully tonight, joining us is a former mayor of South San Francisco, Roberta Telia, who, as you probably know, was instrumental in forming the first airport noise insulation program with your predecessor, Lou Turpin. And I'm sure you've heard of Lou Turpin. And I can only imagine what a meeting was like between Roberta Telia and Lou Turpin.
Well, and I still keep in contact with Lou as well.
All right.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
All right. Share my screen here. Okay, I'm hoping you all can see. Let's see, we'll go to the title slide here. My title slide?
We have it.
Okay, great. So, thanks for the opportunity to talk about what's going on at SFO, and we'll certainly spend time on the noise insulation program. And just really appreciate the partnership with South San Francisco over the years, and come to know Mike Futrell, and he and I have worked through a number of issues together. And I think really appreciate the success of our partnership with an important part of our community surrounding the airport. And so here's what I thought I'd cover tonight, is talk about the noise insulation program, talk about our impact of COVID-19 and some of the efforts around recovery, and then certainly want to leave time for any questions that you may have. And first, I want to get everyone on the framework around the noise insulation program. And there's two key components to it. There's the Second Chance Initiative, which is FAA-supported, and then there's the Repair and Replacement Initiative. And this is one that's specifically SFO-funded and was launched in the interest of being a good partner with the community and funded entirely by SFO. So I'll talk a little bit about the early phases, again, just to give that framework for the history of noise insulation, and talk about the initial phases in South San Francisco and how South San Francisco benefited from the original program, and then what's coming up, and status you on the current program. And so, you know, the first, the initiative around second chance is for those properties that were not treated in the previous phases of the noise insulation program. And so, you know, that changed ownership or some event, or they opted out. Now there's a second chance for folks to opt in. And so it does provide for the same level of improvements that the original program did. It is partially funded by the FAA. The airport does also contribute a fairly significant amount, I believe about 50%. And the eligibility requirements are still very much like, sorry, as they were originally around the 65 dB noise exposure map. And that's the new 65 dB, the most recent one, not the one that was defining that back in the, when the program was initiated. The residence had to be built prior to October of 98, and then dB level interior of measured above 45 dB, and then the granting of aviation easements as a requirement by the owner to the airport. And then the replacement initiative, we started in July of 2018. And it really was in response to one of your residents who said, "I've had these windows 20 years, and they are no longer effective, and what can you do to help?" And, you know, there were a number of residences that experienced this. And I've heard about maybe some quality of construction issues as well. And so we did take it upon ourselves to start budgeting an amount per year. The first two years, we put $1 million in. We were going to have, I think, $1.5 million this past year, but we've had to, I think, maintain $1 million due to our financial circumstances. And then the eligibility requirements are different. The 65 dB still must apply by federal law, but it is now around the failure of the original acoustic improvements and a confirmation of eligibility through site inspections. And so the original program, the total program covered about 15,000 properties within the original 65 CNL. The airport and the FAA invested about $187 million in that effort. And then as far as South San Francisco goes, almost 8,000 properties were insulated. We got a large proportion of aviation easements at a total cost of $86 million. And there is an amount of, that's the number we have, but I think you have the number with interest on your consent calendar, which we appreciate. And so we look forward to receiving those funds. Current work in the Second Chance Initiative, we have 214 properties that were invited to participate. We received 79 responses. 70 dwellings are expected to receive the insulation. So we have a construction schedule broken into groups 1, 2, and 3. And it's about $8 million for those 70 dwellings. And these are fairly extensive improvements because these are part of, they haven't had any benefit of the original program. So you can see 70 dwellings for $8 million. That's quite a bit of investment. We will be pursuing future grants as they become available. And then under the replacement initiative, we've got a lot of applications, 773. We've done 660 site assessments, and we found about 457 eligible properties. Design is in progress for the first group of 194 homes. We have our construction schedule over the next three years, and our estimate to complete is about $4.3 million. So you can see, we get a lot more reduced costs out of this replacement for obvious reasons. We're going in there and swapping out windows and doors and maybe weather stripping, that kind of thing. So a much easier task and much more cost-effective in terms of coverage of properties. So let's, you know, talk about the impact, and you're all a close neighbor of ours and experiencing the same similar kinds of impact. And our passenger traffic is down 71%. It was down 98% originally, and we've been slowly clawing our way back. International is more impacted than domestic. We are the biggest employer in San Mateo County, pre-pandemic 46,000 employees, working at the estimate. You can see the number, a very significant impact to the community and the workforce. And right now, there's probably, yeah, about 60%, of the employees are back at work at the airport, and our revenues are down 23%. You know, we made a lot of decisions over the past year, I'm sure, as you did as well as a city, and really preserving cash as a priority because of unsure about the depth and duration of the crisis. We suspended about $2 billion in capital programs. We suspended $1 billion right out of the gate, just to err on the side of caution. And then as things were clearly not, there was no quick return to travel, we suspended another billion, and we had already put in place almost $4.5 billion of the $7 billion program. So we were fortunate to have been in the market and had cash on hand to be able to bring projects to a successful stopping point of our capital program. And we did restructuring of contracts and certainly a lot of things around hiring and reducing fees, management fees, and all of those things. A complete review of all of our operating as well as our capital. Capital, we're a $1.3 billion annual operating budget. Half of that, a little bit less, is debt service. So capital restructuring has been very important for us, as well as OpEx reductions. And then to try to take advantage of reduced flight activity, and today, the number of aircraft, which is, we're at about 50% of aircraft activity, even though we're only at 20% of passenger activity. So there's more aircraft flying proportionally than the number of passengers as compared to pre-COVID. So we're at about a 50% operation, gives us an opportunity to do some runway shutdowns for maintenance. And we have a big overlay project, about $150 million for that overlay. We'll start in April and shut a runway down. Maybe you recall the runway shutdown we did about a year and a half, two years ago, that was really impactful and a lot of delays. We do not anticipate delays with this next runway shutdown. And then recovery, you know, we have been very fortunate to benefit from federal relief as U.S. airports have. And you can see the numbers there. We are the recipients of about $300 million between the two first, the first two stimulus packages. And we have about, we're hopeful to get about $193 million in the stimulus round three. And there are benefits to small business within those packages as well that help our workforce, as well as our small businesses, primarily food and beverage and retail. And for financial planning purposes, we're considering about 40%, so a doubling of where we are today in the next year and a few months, say fiscal year, end of fiscal year '22, which ends July of next year, where we think we'll get to 40%, and then maybe 60% a year after that. Those are pretty conservative. That's for our financial planning efforts. I am hopeful, and I know there's a lot of pent-up travel demand. So I'm anticipating a pretty good bump in the next six months, virus variants permitting and vaccine permitting. And then, you know, there's circumstances around the change in the nature of business travel that may prolong SFO's recovery, much like it did after 9/11. And I feel like there's a similar set of circumstances that are going to continue to pressure us in terms of the return of travel. Many of you may know that after 9/11, it took 10 years for SFO to get back to the pre-9/11 passenger levels. So we're doing a lot of work around trying to understand what our future looks like, not just around a vaccine forecast and a COVID recovery forecast, but also around some anti-business tax initiatives and, you know, different ways of conducting business virtually, and housing, and all of those things that have put pressure on business activity in the Bay Area and in the state. And then, you know, looking at recovery scenarios from three to six years, and this is the forecast we're looking at here, and you can see how it tails off, which is a function of maybe early return of demand of leisure traffic, a longer return of demand of business traffic in the left-hand chart. And the dash line is the 58 million passengers we were at pre-pandemic. The axis on the left is in plane passengers, which shows about 29, and you double that to get your total passengers. So 58 million. And we're hoping to be back at that 58 million somewhere around 2024 timeframe, '25. But we'll see how circumstances play out. And then just, I thought, you know, to get a feel for what, how we balance finances at the airport and make decisions around investment and financing, a lot of it is related to how we remain competitive with other airports. And it's important for SFO to be competitive with other international airports, for example, because internationalism is a 26% of our market, but really drives a lot of our domestic theater traffic as well. And so we compete with LAX, we compete with Seattle, Tacoma, Salt Lake City, Denver. We have to be competitive from a cost perspective of the airline's cost of operating of the SFO. So we balance our need to maintain our reserves with our need to help contribute to the airline's financial difficulties, and this is what our CPE function is. And you can see, we were at an 18 CPE, and we were anticipated to go up to 25, but it's going to spike because of the low inflings up to 50. And then you can see over time, depending on which recovery scenario, how that comes down. So we are using our reserves. We have no dependence on the city and county of San Francisco. We're fully self-reliant, and fortunately, we've been preparing for circumstances that we're dealing with for a number of years. And then you're all familiar with our population and the growth of our population, our employment, our per capita income, and that has really been the driving factor around the success of SFO and travel to the region and the fastest-growing airport in the U.S. for about 10 years straight internationally. Those circumstances are dramatically changed, and the region is impacted, and the question is for how long? So we're doing a lot of work with trying to rebuild international routes with other airports and other countries, and developing technologies that will allow for health passports. You're seeing a lot around health passports and credentialing that integrates healthcare systems, technology with airport systems, technology with airlines' technology, so it becomes a seamless experience, and you don't have eight-hour line waits like you saw in Heathrow a couple of months back, when they were just at 10% of their normal pre-COVID levels. So there's a big effort to really drive health credentialing to allow for the return of travel in any kind of an efficient manner. And we're at the forefront of helping drive that. And that's it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Director Sotero, I wanted to thank you for the presentation, you know, the update on the noise insulation, but even more importantly, perhaps, the data and the projections that you are sharing with us. What happens at SFO is really integral to the economy of South San Francisco. So these projections are important to us as we look at our future. So any member of council have a question for Ivar or any comments? So it's a very complete report, apparently. And this is going to be one of the best investments of your time, Ivar, because we're going to move that item number 16, which is returning some funds to your operation, because we have such great faith in you and your ability. And we don't want to be, you know, using monies on administering that small amount of funds when you can do such a superb job. So we show a number of 784,000. So for 10 minutes of your time, that's a nice return. But let's see if we'll go in that direction. So next item, Rosa?
Moving on to administrative business, item number 16, Report Regarding Adoption of a Resolution Concluding the South San Francisco Airport Noise Insulation Program and Returning $784,812.15 in Remaining Funds to the San Francisco International Airport. Item 16A is a resolution presented by Assistant to the City Manager Christina Fernandez.
Okay. Welcome, Mrs. Fernandez.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Christina Fernandez, Assistant to the City Manager. I did have a slide deck, which I'm hoping IT can load. But I feel like Director Sotero covered most of what I was going to cover, so that's great. Should be quick.
I think that's from his presentation.
Yeah. Agenda item 16? Possible. Okay, well, I guess I'll just go through sort of, you know, you kind of heard the background regarding the installation program. You know, the city, you know, in 2018, city council was updated on an outreach program. We wanted to get the word out to all potentially eligible residents about this program. We didn't want any of our residents to be left out. And so we did a press release. We mailed invitations to all potentially eligible properties. You know, we created outreach flyers and mailers. We had a city-dedicated website just for this program, a dedicated email and phone number. We also created an interactive map where you could plug in your address, and you could see whether you fall within the boundaries or not. And we would continue to work with, you know, providing assistance to our constituents to add questions about the program, so they could call or email, and we would basically do a lot of hand-holding to make sure that they submitted their application. And we'll continue to do so even, you know, after we sort of streamline this process and hand over the administration to SFO. I do just want to mention that, you know, SFO, you know, they do continue to receive grant funding for this program. And, you know, it's, you know, they have a budget of about $16 million for this program, and about half of that, it looks like it will potentially go to insulating eligible dwellings in South City. So that's really great news for our city. So, given that our city has gone above and beyond in making sure that all of our properties are aware of this program, we want to go ahead and, you know, continue to work collaboratively with the airport and turn over the administration and the remaining funds to the airport. We are currently holding about $784,000, and we have not expended any of these funds since 2018. So they've really just been kind of sitting in an inactive fund. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Christina. Council, any questions for the Assistant to the City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, just clarification in terms of the funds. Are the funds commingling with other funds of other cities? Or is it just directly for us, for South City residents, that they can access the funds for future insulation?
Right. So this funding that we have remaining, it's my understanding that back in, I think, 2000, the model was different, such that other cities also had funding provided to them by the airport and FAA grants. It was like an 80/20 split, I believe. And so these funds were specifically just for South City. The other cities that participate in this program have since returned the remaining funding that they have. And in order to sort of, you know, streamline this, such that SFO would then administer the program, we no longer go out and do any sort of eligibility or any sort of treatment work like we did back in the day. So that's all stuff that SFO handles now. And so it just makes sense that we would return that funding to SFO to continue that work.
Great. Thank you.
And I think interesting to remember that in his report, he mentioned 194 homes that would take $4.33 million, and then 70 dwellings new to the program at $8 million. So the dollars that are committed are, you know, many times over what we'll be returning, but it's a great question. Anyone else?
I just want to thank our staff, because it seems like they have done their due diligence and really had done most of the things that they need to do in order to get our residents the best benefit from this. So thank you, Director Sotero, also for coming.
Thank you, Flor. Anyone else have a question or comment? Or should I encourage maybe Mark or Flor, because they had questions, to make the motion?
So moved.
Do you have a motion on the floor? And Vice Mayor seconded? That's correct. All right, and we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nigales?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Mayor Adiego?
Yes. And if he's still listening, Mr. Sotero, there's a lot of work to be done, and we hope that that's 784 helps make it happen.
Thanks, Mayor Adiego, and good to see you, and thanks for your continued support, Mayor, and council members.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next item on presentations.
Proclamation honoring Aubrey Merriman for his dedication as Chief Executive Officer at Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County, presented by Councilmember Eddie Flores.
Okay, Councilman Flores, this is...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Flores.
Your request in your moment, yes?
Thank you. South San Francisco, tonight, I have the great honor to be able to recognize an individual who, for the last six years, has been instrumental in giving back and leading one of our remarkable community organizations, the Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County. Mr. Aubrey Merriman has fearlessly led this organization and transformed it back to be a key player in the education and care of our children and youth here in our city and around the county. It is an honor for me to congratulate Mr. Merriman through this proclamation and read the following into the record. Commending Aubrey Merriman, CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County, March 24, 2021. Whereas Aubrey has more than 25 years of experience in nonprofit management and began his lifelong passion for the Boys and Girls Club movement during his upbringing as a club kid and former Youth of the Year. And whereas motivated by a deep commitment to that transformation that happens in the lives of young people through the Boys and Girls Club experience, Aubrey has built his career around helping others. Aubrey's role in leading the club is grounded in the belief that everyone has a unique potential, as it is the club's role, to help one another find it. And whereas, under Aubrey's leadership, the Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County has experienced unprecedented organizational growth and recognition, including being the recipient of the Mayor's Award from the City of South San Francisco, the Paul Harris Fellows Award from the South San Francisco Rotary Club, and the League of Eagles Gold Award from the Boys and Girls Club of America. And whereas, during his tenure at the Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County, he grew the club from $1 million organization into a $2.5 million organization, and expanded services and the reach of the club to include partnerships with the school districts of South San Francisco and Pacifica and other nonprofits and the business community. And whereas Aubrey and his staff enhanced their clubhouse by creating a state-of-the-art teen center and a world-class STEAM center. And whereas, under Aubrey's leadership, the club opened its doors two months after COVID-19 struck, serving children in person during their essentials camp and provided childcare to first responders. Given this deep belief in training, all of the club's staff were trained in social, emotional techniques, which support our children every day as they deal with a global pandemic. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of South San Francisco does hereby recognize Aubrey Merriman for inspiring and igniting young people to step into their most full potential, and for his outstanding service and contribution to both the City of South San Francisco and San Mateo County. Signed by the Mayor and all members of the City Council.
Very nice. And Aubrey has joined us, hopefully?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have. Good evening, Mayor Adiego, Vice Mayor Nigales, Councilmember Nicholas, Councilmember Coleman, and Councilmember Flores, City Manager Futrell, city staff and community members. I just can't thank you enough for this very humbling honor. And Councilmember Flores, thank you for your voice and example of inspirational leadership. It is tremendous honor for me to be here with you this evening, and I really accept this proclamation with profound humility and gratitude. And on behalf of the thousands of Boys and Girls Clubs, kids who have walked through our door, our staff, our Board of Directors, our city and school partnerships, and our community partners and collaborators, I wanted to thank everybody who made this journey possible. It truly is a team accomplishment that began with the vision shared by our board. It truly is a team accomplishment that began with the vision shared by our board, thoroughly embraced and carried out by our staff and partners. And we wouldn't be here this evening without their courage and guidance and support. And this honor is ultimately a tribute to their ingenuity, their teamwork, and their commitment to excellence in servicing South San Francisco. As CEO, I always recognize that our successes today can be traced to the legacy of outstanding leaders and innovators over the last 70 years. So this proclamation is also a magnificent testament to those who have gone before me, who have invested your labor and love, many of you I'm looking at on the screen, and I am, and the club is a reflection of those contributions. I also, we were missing, I didn't say that every day Mr. Rolando Madrid and the team at the Boys and Girls Club take on some of the most pressing challenges for some of the hardest-to-reach children and families. And what they achieve in the classroom, at the clubhouses, on the playgrounds, and in the virtual realm is truly extraordinary. They work tirelessly each day to advance the mission and vision of Boys and Girls Club in North San Mateo County, and it is my sincere privilege to lead them. And I'm deeply thankful for all they do and what it means to the world. And I accept this proclamation. I want to thank the City Council and the City Manager for making this possible. And leadership matters. It matters even more today because the need for effective and inspiring leadership has never been greater. And we need leaders who set high expectations for themselves, not just in terms of vision and competence, but in how they express gratitude and exemplify civility. We need leaders who uphold their enterprise's core values in every facet of their lives. And we need leaders who understand how their words and actions influence not just the culture inside their business, but the public's broader trust in the sectors that they represent. And that's why it's such an honor to look out of the Zoom room and see so many outstanding leaders here. Some I know personally, others I have respected from afar. And that's why I want to thank you all for joining in this opportunity and continuing your dedication to lead in a way that lifts others. And over the years, many of you have shared your advice and counsel with me, and for that, I'm deeply grateful. Mayor Adiego, Vice Mayor Nagales, and Councilmember Flores, I'm grateful for your deep connection to the club. I know that you have your own personal close relationship to the Boys and Girls Club and your energy and good humor and selflessness, and quite honestly, your love for the club are a source of constant encouragement and inspiration to me. Thank you for your invaluable and irreplaceable contributions in making this moment possible. I'll conclude by saying the sands in the hourglass of Boys and Girls Club will continue to move in the grand scheme of things. I'm happy to have been a grain of that sand, and it was a privilege and a pleasure and an honor. What started as some obscure city on Sign Hill that I only looked at as a marker to say I'm 50 minutes out of San Francisco has become what feels like an extended family, and it has left an indelible mark in my soul that no amount of time or distance can erase. And my Angelo quote says, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." So thank you for making me feel like I was part of South San Francisco. Thank you for loving the Boys and Girls Club, and thank you for inspiring me to do the best work possible. So I'm deeply honored, and I just thank everybody.
Aubrey, I just need to say that, you know, your energy and your commitment to the Boys and Girls Club and all the programs that they bring to our young people, you know, you were an instant hit, an instant sensation when you came to South San Francisco. And for me, it seems like it's just been a short amount of time. How many years were you with us?
I've been with you five years, Mayor Adiego, and it probably, it's probably, it feels like the same amount of time as my acceptance speech when I got the first Mayor's Award, so--
Yes, yes, what I fondly recall was your attempt at filibuster at Chamber of Commerce.
Absolutely.
Anyway, you've been very important to the club at a very, very difficult time, and I wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors. And South San Francisco is your home, and I hope that you continue to bump into us.
Absolutely, and you can take the kid out of the club, but you can't take the club out of the kid. And I know that Vice Mayor Nagales can relate to that very powerfully.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Nagales, any comments for Aubrey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aubrey, the first day I met you, I told you what the Boys and Girls Club meant to me and how every day after school for Los Toritos, I would go there. And it literally, it kept me out of trouble because both my parents worked. And so there was no one home. And if it wasn't for the folks at the Boys and Girls Club, I don't know where I would be today. And I told you this story because I wanted you to know, and the folks who work there, that I am where I am today because of people like you and the people who work at the Boys and Girls Club. So I know whoever takes over has some big shoes to fill. You're only a phone call away, and I know that South City will always be your home, the place that you love and care. So Aubrey, I know it's not goodbye, but just see you later.
Definitely, definitely, for sure. I appreciate that. And Mayor Adiego, I'd be remiss if I didn't also publicly acknowledge and thank you for your support of the club throughout my tenure, but even leading up to my tenure. So there were some rocky times for the organization, and you were very much an anchoring force for that. So thank you for making the last five years even possible for me to come along and have a part in the book of the Boys and Girls Club. So thank you. And Councilmember Flores, you have just transformed, you know, my thinking, my leadership with everything that you do and everything that you stand for. You've been an equity partner in this work, and you've really raised my level of thinking and awareness. So I can't thank you enough for that. You've made me a better person and a better leader.
Any other comments from Councilpeople? If not, let's go ahead and go on to the next presentation. Have a good evening, Aubrey.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you for all your work and your leadership.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Item number three, proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April 4 through April 10, presented by Mayor Mark Adiego.
So this is one of my pleasures as mayor, that I get to select the proclamations that I get to read before anyone else can grab them. And, you know, this is an annual proclamation that we present, and it's just so fitting that it's occurring, you know, the beginning of April because we think we're on the cusp of perhaps the reopening of our libraries in the very near future. And it's been a long year-plus without them. So in anticipation of that, I'd like to read this proclamation as recognition of National Library Week in April. Whereas during the pandemic, library workers continue to exceed their communities' demands and adapt resources and services to meet their users' needs during these challenging times. Whereas whether people visit in person or virtually, libraries offer endless opportunities to transform lives through education and lifelong learning. And whereas first sponsored in 1958, National Library Week is sponsored by the American Library Association and observed in libraries across the country each April. Whereas the theme for National Library Week 2021, Welcome to Your Library, promotes the idea that libraries extend far beyond the four walls of a building and that everyone is welcome to use their services. And whereas whether people visit in person or virtually, libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia, content, and educational programs. And whereas libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, providing STEAM programming, makerspaces, and access and training for new technologies. And whereas libraries are pioneers supporting democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of South San Francisco does hereby proclaim April the 4th through the 10th as National Library Week and encourages all residents to take advantage of the wonderful programs, services, and resources at our libraries. And I believe the librarian Valerie Summers with us this evening. And if I could, I would pass this through the Zoom screen, but we'll get it to her later in the week. Valerie?
You're muted.
Valerie's muted.
Thank you. I said I'm very pleased with the proclamation, and I'm very excited about where libraries are going. And I'd like to say that our library board president, Diane Huddleston, is here. Huddleston is on Zoom now and would love to say a few words.
Wonderful.
Thank you again, all of you.
Miss Huddleston, welcome.
Good evening. Everyone can hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Mayor Adiego, and Vice Mayor Nagales, and Councilmembers Nicholas, Flores, and Coleman, good evening. And we at the library thank you so much for this proclamation. And even though the times have been trying, we have done in the past year over 93,000 transactions, which is pretty incredible if you think about it. And you have to thank Valerie Summers and the staff that came in, one by one, piecemeal by piecemeal, through the different parts and the different stages of the pandemic. We look forward to being able to serve our population, especially through our CLC and our Grand Avenue and main branches. And we look forward to being able soon to slowly reopen and provide even more services. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Diane. And we're on to the next item then. Rosa?
Would you like to take item number 13, or are we moving on to public comments?
I think it was our intent to, item 13 is in action, but we'd like to move it up with the presentation.
Moving on to administrative business, item number 13. Report regarding a resolution renaming the Westboro Recreation Center and Magnolia Center and naming the Caltrain Plaza after South San Francisco women who have provided extraordinary service to the community. Item 13A is a resolution presented by Library Director Valerie Summers.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Adiego, Vice Mayor Nagales, and council members. I'm Valerie Summers, Library Director, and it gives me great pleasure to present this report regarding a resolution renaming the Westboro Recreation Center and Magnolia Center and naming the new Caltrain Plaza after South San Francisco women who have provided extraordinary service to our community. I have a short PowerPoint. I have a long presentation. It was really hard to whittle down all the extraordinary work these women have done, but I did want to get their pictures up here. So little by little, we will be advancing the slides, not yet, though. Staff recommends that City Council receive a recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Naming Committee and adopt a resolution to rename the Westboro Recreation Center as Alice Peña Bulos Community Center and the Magnolia Center's Roberta Cherry Tellia Center, and name the new Caltrain Station Plaza as Carol Matsumoto Plaza. A bit of background, at the February 18, 2021, meeting of the City Council Ad-Hoc Naming Committee, committee members Mayor Mark Adiego and Councilmember Flor Nicholas provided direction to staff regarding renaming the Westboro Recreation Center as the Alice Peña Bulos Community Center, the Magnolia Center as the Roberta Cherry Tellia Center, and the forthcoming Caltrain Station Plaza as the Carol Matsumoto Plaza. Three women who have provided extraordinary service to the South San Francisco community. In honor of their contributions and service to the community and as a significant public appreciation and celebration during Women's History Month, the committee asked staff to present these naming requests to City Council for approval. Little background, we have a city administrative instruction that defines policies, responsibilities, and procedures associated with naming of city facilities. In addition to our practice of naming facilities based on geographic location for easy reference by our residents, the instruction also acknowledges special recognition of individuals who have made exceptional contributions to the city, including in this current request, individuals who are being honored for their public service as an elected official and/or as a community volunteer. Per the instruction, the proposed name may be reviewed if necessary by the Planning Commission or Parks and Recreation Commission and summarized for consideration by City Council, who's responsible for final approval of the proposed names. There's a defined process for renaming existing city buildings with the recreation facility renaming reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission prior to City Council final approval, review and approval. I'm really happy to say that the Parks and Recreation Commission considered their item at their regular public meeting of March 16, 2021, and unanimously approved the renaming of the Westboro Recreation Center in honor of Alice Peña Bulos and the Magnolia Center in honor of Roberta Cherry Tellia, sorry. I'd like to highlight these honorees first. Next slide, please. Thank you. And they're in no particular order, just luck of the draw. The first one is the proposing naming of Westboro Recreation Center for Alice Peña Bulos. Former Assembly Member and Mayor Gene Mullin requested the Westboro Recreation Center be renamed for the icon Alice Bulos. He noted Ms. Bulos was a former college professor in the Philippines, a leader of the Filipino community in the North Peninsula area for many years, and she lived across the street from Westboro Park. Ms. Bulos was a longtime South San Francisco resident, living in her house on Liberty Court with her daughter, son-in-law, and three grandchildren. She died in October 2016, but her impact lives on. She was a strong supporter of and advocate for the Filipino community and spent many years promoting public policies and services. Next slide. As an inductee into the San Mateo County Women's Hall of Fame, Ms. Bulos was recognized among a long list of accomplishments for working tirelessly for equal rights and employment, housing, crime prevention, and services for youth. Furthermore, she was a staunch champion of women's issues and women in the workplace. Ms. Bulos left an indelible mark in the local Filipino community for her political leadership on the local, state, and federal levels, and was honored for her service and activism, including being acclaimed by the Democratic National Committee for a quarter century of service, and was given the prestigious honor of serving on the Federal Council on Aging as an appointee of President Bill Clinton. Her grassroots voter registration drive brought more Filipino voices and participation into the political process. Ms. Bulos's legacy carries on through the work of the local community activists and leaders she mentored. True to her dedication as a community organizer and greater diversity in government, she put together a large group of petitioners who attended a City Council meeting and advocated for the appointment of Pedro Gonzalez as the first Latino City Council member. Honoring Ms. Bulos by renaming this building as a community center dedicated to the legacy of the extraordinary woman known as the grande dame of Filipino-American politics in the South San Francisco neighborhood, where she made such a positive impact on so many people, is an appropriate acknowledgement for a life strongly committed to service and community involvement. Next slide. Proposed renaming of Magnolia Center for Roberta Cherry Tellia. Former Assembly Member and Mayor Gene Mullin again has requested a city building be dedicated in honor of Roberta Cherry Tellia, the city's first female planning commissioner, councilwoman, and mayor, breaking all sorts of barriers in achieving these positions. Ms. Tellia was born and raised in South San Francisco, receiving a BA in Political Science from Seattle University and advanced study at the College of Notre Dame. Her long career as an elementary school teacher, involvement on the Planning Commission, and college background preceded her election to City Council in 1978. Ms. Tellia served as mayor four times over the course of her City Council career, spanning from 1978 through 1995. Her civic accomplishments were many. She was a driving force in establishing the South San Francisco Conference Center. She worked with former Assembly Member, City Council Member, and Mayor Gene Mullin while he was a government teacher at South San Francisco High School to create the first Youth Government Day in 1981. And she led the establishment of the Sister City Program with Atletico Mexico. Among her many awards and recognitions, she is also an inductee into the San Mateo County Women's Hall of Fame as a role model for women who strive to achieve their aspirations, making this tribute additionally meaningful during Women's History Month. During her City Council tenure, Ms. Tellia advocated for many projects and programs that enriched the lives of our residents. She was a strong advocate for senior services and was-- She was a strong advocate for senior services and was on city council for the funding, planning and building of the Magnolia Senior Center. It is passed due to honor our first woman council member, dedicated educator and civic leader by renaming Magnolia Center after her. This facility is aligned with Ms. Tellia, oh, next slide, sorry, is aligned with Ms. Tellia's core values. It embodies our city's civic pride and is dedicated to the highest service levels for community members. Next slide, our third honoree. Proposed naming of the new South San Francisco Caltrain Station Plaza for Carol Matsumoto. Former Mayor and Councilmember Carol Matsumoto worked long and hard to bring a new Caltrain Station/Center to South San Francisco, incorporating her vision for a community plaza with art, landscaping and accessibility features. Ms. Matsumoto's background and knowledge of and passion for public transportation, public art and community are exemplified by her advocacy for this partnership project with the San Mateo County Transportation District, SAMTRANs, and Transportation Authority, the TA. Next slide, please. During her long tenure on city council from 1997 through 2020, she is the first five-time mayor, first elected Asian and the second woman to serve on council. Ms. Matsumoto also served on the boards of SAMTRANs and the TA representing North County, and she served on the City County Association of Governments Board representing South San Francisco, SAMTRANs and the TA. Ms. Matsumoto was relentless in, oh, sorry, advocating for funding to rebuild South San Francisco's train station, thus making it safer, more efficient and accessible to riders. The Caltrain Station was fondly redesigned by 2009. It will remove the dangerous holdout track, make the station accessible from both the east and west side of the city, and equally important, provide a safe route for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross Highway 101. With the previous goals accomplished, she continued to advocate for the project and was successful in his support for design upgrades. City council authorized two separate funding amendments to improve the design and appearance of the station and plaza and established the Caltrain Plaza Art Selection Committee, of which Ms. Matsumoto is a member. During her 40-year residency in South San Francisco, she served on over 30 boards, commissions and committees. She founded the Sculpture Garden and was an initial member of the Cultural Arts Commission and a founding member of Improving Public Places, both of which have guided this project. The plaza will not only serve Caltrain riders, it will be an outdoor destination for the community to enjoy. The naming of the new Caltrain Station Plaza in honor of Carol Matsumoto will recognize and reflect the importance of her advocacy for improving the quality of life for South San Francisco residents, businesses, workers and visitors. Next slide. There is no fiscal, immediate fiscal impact related to this report. However, should council direct staff to move forward, proposed costs will be presented to council. It is also acknowledged it's related to the strategic plan. Acknowledging and celebrating community members who have made a difference in South San Francisco is embedded in priority number three, quality of life, and priority number six, community connections. So in conclusion, staff recommends that city council receive a recommendation from the ad hoc naming committee and adopt a resolution to rename the Westboro Recreation Center as the Alice Peña Bulos Community Center and the Magnolia Center as the Roberta Cherry Tellia Center and name the new Caltrain Station Plaza as the Carol Matsumoto Plaza. Acceptance of this resolution will provide recognition of three exceptional South San Francisco women for their service and dedication to our community via the honor of renaming and naming identified city facilities or sites. So I thank you. I will let you know that there are, the honorees are in the audience as well as family members. And I will, I'm here to answer any questions or pass it over to council to discuss and vote before you bring in the speaker. So thank you very much for letting me do this. I've known all three women and it's quite an exciting resolution. Thank you.
It is Valerie. It is an exciting moment in time and a wonderful way to wrap up Women's History Month. It's something that I've had on my mind for a good amount of time. And of course, I had to wait for that moment when Ms. Matsumoto would transition from councilwoman to private citizen to be able to do this properly. So Flor, I'd like you to maybe, as a member of the naming subcommittee, if you'd like to share any thoughts this time.
It is with great pride and honor that I am, you want the resolution, Mayor. I didn't hear the last part.
Oh, just that I thought that you might like to lead off with some comments. And then I hope that you will make, as the woman on our council, I'm hoping that you will make the resolution that I will, I will second, but please go ahead with your comments.
Yes, it is really awe inspiring that these women were part of our community here. And it is really a great pride and honor for me to be part of the naming committee. And I would like to also acknowledge the great allyship of our Mayor Adiego, who is very supportive of renaming this, especially for this month of Women's History Month, that we named these places to ensure that the posterity will remember what you have done for our community and how you made it a lot better.
Thank you, Flor. Any comments from the other gentleman on the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm jumping in here.
Thanks.
Let me start off with Alice Bulos, the grandmother of the Filipino political world, really. And I've said this numerous times, that if it wasn't for Kita Alice, Flor and I would not be here on the city council. She set the path for us and for a lot of Filipino elected leaders in San Mateo County and really in the state and this country. If you were an elected official and you were in the Bay Area, you had to go to Kita Alice's house. That was a must. And I remember hearing stories of her speaking to the governor, senators and presidential candidates, that if you had Kita Alice's ear, that was a good thing. And I see charity here. I wanted to recognize Kita Alice's family. Thank you for, for being here. Let me also say thank you to my former colleague, Carol Matsumoto. I learned a lot from you, Carol. And this, this Caltrain Station would not be here if it wasn't for you. And I really appreciate just the work that you've done for all of us. And you are a legend and I'm happy to call you my colleague. And following you to TA is going to be very, very hard because they talk about all your accomplishments on the TA. So Carol, it only makes sense to name a plaza after you. And Ms. Tellia, I heard so many wonderful stories from Mark, from the mayor, about, about you and how you helped him along the way. And this is a long time coming and I'm honored to join my colleagues to recognize all three wonderful women and leaders that made our city wonderful and great. And so I'm supportive of this and I look forward to voting in support of this. And I thank my two colleagues for bringing this up. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
You know, having each of these extraordinary, what I perceive as heroes in South San Francisco history is really a matter of extreme privilege for us. Mayor Teglia, Mayor Matsumoto, and of course, to the family of Ms. Bulos. And many of us really stand on the shoulders of your brave work. Every single day you have and will continue to inspire us with the valuable work that you all have accomplished. You mean a lot to this council and to those of us that are new, we definitely look to your legacy. Thank you for being great trailblazers and definitely the firsts, but not the last. You each mean a lot to the South City family.
Very good. Councilman Coleman?
Thank you. And I would like to say that, you know, all of your impact, Carol Matsumoto, Roberta Tellia and Alice Bulos has been making such a large impact for so many years. And Ms. Tellia, I was once a student participating in Youth and Government Day. And now I am sitting on this council because I was inspired by the service that I saw shadowing then-Mayor Pradeep Gupta. And I think that, you know, your impact will be lasting many, many years and inspiring many, many young people and women for generations. And thank you so much for your service and your inspiration.
Okay, very good. And Flor, before we take the motion, Roberta, it is, you know, it goes without saying that I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't be here today. You're responsible for that. I remember your first campaign and still very close, but not quite there. And you didn't hesitate. You jumped in right away. You had a two-year campaign to garner the seat that you did in 1978. And then you followed with a long shot in my candidacy, which was surprisingly successful. And then we were able to parley that into a third seat, elevating a young gentleman from the South San Francisco School Board to a council. So in three successive campaigns, you changed the face of the politics in South San Francisco and indeed changed the face of the community. So I still look back at those times and it makes me smile. And I was glad to be a part of it. I'm glad that you're here to celebrate with us. And Carol, one of the best phone calls I ever made was the call to tell you that the naming committee was going to be putting forth your name. And initially you thought it might be for the Sculpture Garden, but I think that you were a little bit knocked over when I mentioned the Train Plaza. And so that was just a great moment for me to be able to surprise you with something because, you know, in the past, it's mostly you've been surprising me over different things. So and Alice Bulos, yes, if you were going to be involved in politics in South San Francisco, you had to check in with her. And she was very generous with her time and her interests and her efforts, not just within the Filipino community, but for all those that were involved in elective office in South San Francisco. She understood why that was ultimately important for the entire community. So with that, Flor, would you like to make a motion? And then we'll ask our guests to make comment. But let's, let's see if we have the votes to make this happen. Flor, a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
It is with great pride.
There's two hands up. I don't know if, from the audience, I don't know if they wanted to comment or about this. I just saw that.
I'm not on that part of the screen. So Rosa, do we have hands up for?
We have two hands up, one from Kum Kum Gupta and Stephen Teglia.
Okay, sure. Yeah, definitely. Let's give them their time. Mrs. Gupta is first?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mrs. Gupta. Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if I can turn my camera on. Okay, not important. I am so proud to see women being recognized at, in our, in my favorite city of South San Francisco. Just to make it clear, I had not raised my hand, but I am honored to congratulate the women who have been the trailblazers for our city. And I would like to congratulate them on this great honor. As we walk around our city, we are going to see their names and reminded of their accomplishments, looking at them as role models. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kupa. And next is Stephen Tellia, who I believe is the youngest son of Roberta Tellia, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
We have somebody with a hand raised and they've lowered their hand. So I'm not sure if he's still on the line. I did see Francis Lester with their hands. So maybe Miss Lester will come back, but I see we're going to let, there's a 214 number. So we're going to unmute them now.
Okay.
Yeah, press it again.
So Rosa, do we indeed have public members that are waiting to speak?
They may have connectivity issues, but now we have Francis Lester on the line.
Can you hear me?
Welcome, Mrs. Lester. How are you?
I'm good. And I want to congratulate everyone and thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to just bring up the fact that my friend Anne Waters, I'm hoping, I've had a conversation with you and I'm hoping later she will be considered to be recognized. Anne Waters has been, resided, she was a trailblazer. She has been a citizen of South San Francisco, I believe it was since 1980. She was also Commissioner of the Water Department as well as her husband. We were, and I was also on the committee. And the whole idea was to have a swimming pool in this area. So she worked tirelessly, many, many years. And so I'm hoping eventually she will be recognized for her hard work. So I just wanted to let you know, in Anne's memory, I hope she, you will consider. And I realize this is a short time. You didn't have long to think about this. And the women who have been recognized are well-deserving. But I also want Anne Waters to be eventually recognized for the hard work she did for Westboro and for the city and for everyone. It wasn't just for African Americans. It was for everyone. She was a fighter and especially for women. So thank you for allowing me to speak. And again, congratulations for all of the recipients. And congratulations to the new counselor. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And I will continue to work as hard as I can to continue to make South City what I consider a great city.
Thank you, Mrs. Lester. And I certainly know that we will be considering your, your thoughts and desire. And hopefully we can meet your expectations. So anyone else ready to speak? Rosa?
We have another caller that will unmute at the moment. It appears that they're unable to connect.
Okay, Rosa, let's go ahead. I'm going to call on Flor to make the motion.
Yes, it is with great pride and pleasure that I am moving to have the Westboro Recreation Center and Magnolia Center renamed and name the Caltrain Plaza after the South San Francisco women who have provided extraordinary service to our community.
Thank you, Rosa. I would like to be the one to second that motion and we'll have a roll call votes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nagales?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Okay, now, now that we have success and we'd like to invite our guests. Maybe we can go in the order in which Valerie was so kind to present. order in which Valerie was so kind to present. So are there representatives of Alice Bullos's family that would like to come online and make any comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Yes.
Welcome.
Hi. And before I even start, I remember seeing all of you at my grandma's house. So good to see you again, Mayor Matsumoto, and former Mayor Taglia. Good evening and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and the city of South San Francisco. Walking with my grandmother, Mommy Alice, was a fond memory I had at the Rec Center and Park. She would encourage me to exercise, to help with my stress, and tell her immigration story, her love story, and all the things she would do for the community so that we can exercise and de-stress together. It's so amazing that the community center near her home will be named after her. This is a great legacy to have that symbolizes the two things that mean the most to her: family, her home nearby, and the center, the community that she passionately advocated for. The impact of this memorial shows how integral Filipino-Philippine Americans are to our community. This is the activism that my mother always stood for. Honoring another strong Filipino-American and women is so important to our cultural history. With her legacy, we hope this encourages more to use their voice and be active within our community. She would always say to be politically active, and no one is an island. And we need to be involved, help each other out. It's a symbol of hope in these trying times of the pandemic. She would also emphasize that education is empowerment. School is so important. You need to find a career that'll make you happy and also be involved in our community. And that impact, I'm working as a Filipino-American, teaching Filipino-fles in the SOMA, and hoping to encourage more to do the same. Even being born here, she emphasized culture and language, and also working for immigrant rights, senior rights, and women's rights. She would want us to be active and learn how to help those in needs. Besides that, she was a loving grandmother who did whatever she could to help her family. She always wanted the best and gave the best advice. She always loved to hear the updates about her community and still give advice, even if she was bedridden. She'd always ask me, what's going on? Tell them what's going on. Tell them to do this. And I miss her so much, just like the rest of our family and community. She showed what love and forgiveness means. I hope we can continue her legacy by just being involved and knowing that she's still continuing to watch over us. How can we give back to our community? We see it with our community members now with Vice Mayor Nagales and Councilmember Flores, that there are more people willing to be involved. This is a true honor and privilege. We hope this motivates more to be involved, to utilize their voice politically, and be part of our community. We also would like to acknowledge Filipino Education Center, Galingbata, SOMA Filipinas, the Banyan Equity Center for Veterans, Kumares, Alice, and the Filipino Cultural Community Center for their support. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you. And then I think next we'll go in order that they were elected as women to the city council. So is the family of Roberta Taglia with us?
Former Mayor Taglia is here with us.
Wonderful. Roberta, do you have any comments you'd like to make? To share with us?
You know I do.
Yes.
Mark, good evening, Mayor and Mayor Adiego, and members of the city council, and all South San Francisco residents. I consider this a very singular and unexpected honor. I am very humbled by it. I do have a short story I'd like to share with you, if I may, about how Magnolia Center came to be, and how we used to do business in South San Francisco a long time ago. A long time ago, many of the buildings which spoke to the history of our city were being torn down, and there was a very profound sense of loss in the community. The spirit for preservation was there, the funds weren't. As you well know, historical preservation is a very costly business, and cities are usually unable to expend taxpayer dollars, however appealing such a project might be. But we were lucky. There came a time when redevelopment dollars were flowing from the federal government to the counties to be used to develop senior services and housing. But the competition for these funds among the cities of San Mateo County was indeed fierce. It seemed that other cities on the peninsula with more influential leaders and interest had the inside track to win these funds. I remember a private meeting that I had with a county representative who would have the final say on dispersment of these funds. I begged for the money. I promised him that if they would make the commitment to South San Francisco, I would find the votes, and we would make senior housing happen in South San Francisco. On a handshake, he went out on a personally very risky limb and assigned the money for South San Francisco. We, the city, partnered with Bridge Housing at that time, and the Magnolia Community Center and Senior Housing Project came to be, and Magnolia School was renovated and maintained. So a part of local history stayed with us, and the city benefited all the way around. As it happens, I attended primary school there, and my mother, in her later years, enjoyed the senior services that were offered by the city in that building. I'd like to thank too former Mayor Richard Haffey and you, Mark, because you allowed me, you allowed me to have my head in an idea that, and let me run, an idea that many people thought would never happen. I'd like to thank too Gus Nicolopoulos and Mitch Demonte for the support that they gave. We could not have done it without all of you. I would also like to say, off of this subject, I'd like to say I'm very pleased to be on the same agenda with Alice Bullos and Carol Matsumoto. I was on the city council when Alice untiringly pestered, bludgeoned, begged, and demanded that we pay attention to the needs of Westboro. She was fearless. Westboro and the city owe her a great debt of gratitude. I know that she is smiling on you all this evening, and that Westboro in particular should be smiling with her. And for councilwoman and Mayor Carol Matsumoto, I didn't have the privilege of serving with her. But I, her interest in, her long, long interest in county and regional transportation is well-known, dating back to her early service in former State Senator Quentin Cop's office. Thousands of people will thank her for her efforts on a daily basis as they pass through the new South San Francisco rail station named for her. So again, I think job well done all the way around. Thanks for my part. I am very humble about this. I am very grateful for this recognition, and I wish you all well, as I always have.
Thank you, Roberta. And I'm looking forward. It's nice to see you this evening, even on Zoom. But shortly, with a little bit of luck, and when we are ready to grace the building with your name, we'll have to ask you to come north and gather with us for that unveiling. So looking forward to that moment.
My pleasure, for sure.
Thank you, Roberta. And so next we have former, just barely former, Mayor Matsumoto. Is she on our Zoom meeting this evening?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you. So now it's my turn to tell stories. I first met Alice when I worked for Senator Cop. Alice came in, and the senator assigned me to take care of all of Alice's needs. I remember Alice was relentless. And of course, Alice didn't drive, so I started a club, which later on, after the movie Driving Miss Alice, Alice took me on all these committees that I had no idea what I was doing, so I'd drive her there. And she was also, I hope, she was good in making sure that the Filipino veterans got their due compensation. And then with Congressman Jackie Speer, there was so many things she did for the community. And so we used to have 10:30 calls. When her day was busy, she would call me and say, okay, let's rehearse, let's go over what we did and what we're going to do tomorrow. And I went, okay. I remember, Roberta, this is, this is, I was working for then Supervisor Anna Esu, and I had applied for the Planning Commission. And the interview was set, and so I had no way of contacting her. But just before the interview, Anna said, you can't apply for that as long as you're my legislative aide. And so there were no such things as cell phones, et cetera. So I went to the interview and I said, thank you for the opportunity. I won't be, I won't do with my application. And Roberta said, well, that's the first time we've been turned down before the interview. I had great admiration for both these segments. But what I'd like to do is to thank Mayor Adiego and Congress, Congress, I've elevated her, Councilwoman Nicholas from the naming committee for the recommendation. I want to thank the council members, you know, for supporting that recommendation. It took many years to get funding, not only the initial monies, but subsequent monies for this, for the revitalization. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize Assembly Speaker Prokam Kevin Mullen, who many times took time from his very busy schedule to join me in advocating for the funds. It always helps to have a big wig sitting next to you. And apparently, we made a very successful team. In addition, in addition to the things that the station will, the Revitalize Station will provide, I also want others to know that in 2020, a city manager and I spent months working on Caltrain's 2020 business plan, and we were able to present our case and using the Revitalize Station for us, for South San Francisco, to have more frequent stops as opposed to the local. At some point, we'll also be able to have express service. So I want to, I want to thank this time Sam fans, the transportation authority, and city staff. It takes many to make things happen, and not just individuals. So again, bottom line, it's exciting because this will be a game changer. And thank you all. I really am honored and appreciated.
Thank you, Carol. And Carol, I look forward to, I think we have a meeting coming up. Carol's on a special subcommittee, a citizen member of a subcommittee that's looking at artwork that turns out it's for her plaza. So it's very appropriate that you're helping in this election. So Carol, this, I must tell you that, and for all the people we honored tonight, this is one of my happiest moments in many months.
Yes, you deserve it. You've been through a lot, yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for joining us tonight. And we look forward to the finishing of the plaza and the name being put in an appropriate location. So good things to come. All right. So that concludes item 13. Counsel, I wanted to thank all of you for immediately embracing this, the Park and Recreation Commission also, and the city staff. This, these type of things can get off the rails very easily, but there was just general consensus that the time was right to, to name something, remembering these tremendous individuals that have been so important to South San Francisco's development. With that, I guess we'll move along on our agenda. Good evening, ladies. Thank you for being here.
Moving on to public comments, we didn't receive any written public comments, but we do have a hand raised from a 214 number, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Rosa.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I had a difficult time getting on. My name is Mina Richardson, and good evening, Mayor Adiego, Vice Mayor Mark Nagales, and council members. Esteemed ladies, Ms. Carol Matsumoto, Mrs. Roberta Taglia, and the relative of Alice Bullos. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the accomplishments of an African American in our community, and hope that she will be remembered in the future. Her name was Anne Waters, and she was one of the early, let's say, residents of a new section in South San Francisco. When Mr. Callen wanted to rename that area into Callen Park, the city council expressed that they would annex Westboro as a new community, but call it, needed to be called Westboro Park. As one of the earlier residents of that area, Mrs. Anne Waters and her husband, who knew Mr. Callen of Callen's, who's been, whose street name is Callen Boulevard, as we know it today, were friends. And Anne had no children, and she went ahead and decided she was one of the new residents, and she commissioned herself to have a study of the area because it was a brand-new community with brand-new homes, and it didn't have any, any, any public gathering places. So she presented her study before the council, and the council agreed to build the Westboro Rec Center. And she, they built the Rec Center in 1988, and she proceeded, the council said at the time, if you raise a million dollars, we will take care of the pool. And maybe Mrs. Taglia, if she's still listening, she will attend, because she was on the council at that time. And it was a momentous occasion when I, when they built the new Rec Center in 1988, in approximately time, I don't remember. But I had occasion to meet her. And so, because I joined her efforts to raise money for that pool, well, she fell short. And at that time, she decided the committee couldn't continue or would not be able to raise a million dollars. So she donated it to the city, and the city built a playground next to the, built the playground next to the Rec Center.
Mina, Mina, I want to, I want to thank you for weighing in and advocating for Anne Waters. I know there's more to this story, and, and there will be other opportunities to share that, more of the story with the citizens. As, you know, we build interest in, looking at the potential to rename something in Anne Waters' name. So thank you for participating this evening. Okay, Rosa?
We have Alyssa Canfield.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I do hope that this is the appropriate time to speak. My name is Alyssa, and I am the program manager at Star Vista, and I oversee the Transitional Youth Services Program. I'm here tonight just to thank you once again for your continued support of our youth program in South San Francisco. We support former foster youth in a triplex unit, very close to Orange and Grand. And we work closely with our youth to support them with housing and comprehensive supportive services with the goal of reaching self-sufficiency. I just wanted to provide the update. The last time we spoke at this meeting, we provide it, we shared of our exciting renovation that took place, which we're very proud of. And our program is currently accepting new youth. So we continue to do our best to outreach to community members, to have youth get connected to our program. And we're just really proud of the work we're doing and the youth, and the accomplishments of our young people. So thank you for your continued support, and we really value our partnerships with all of you, and we are proud to be residents of South San Francisco. So thank you.
And Ms. Canfield, thank you for joining us. And I think that, you know, one of the bright spots of downtown is that corner of Orange Avenue and Grand Avenue, those three homes that take care of young people that benefit so greatly. Those, those three homes that take care of young people that benefit so greatly. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Rosa, any other hands up?
No additional speakers.
Okay, so.
We have two hands up, but I don't know if these are related to the item further on the agenda.
Okay. Who are the individuals? Maybe we can direct them to, are you thinking item 12, maybe?
Rachel Escobaros, oh, they lowered their hand. So perhaps they're for that item agenda.
Right, for item 12. So let's go ahead with the next item on our agenda.
Council comments request.
Yes, so let's, any, any requests or comments from Councilman Coleman? We haven't heard too much from you this evening. Would you like to share with us? Any comments or requests? If not, no. Okay.
Just general comments?
Sure, yes, definitely.
No, I think we'll have to wait till the end.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Flores, anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mr. Raymond Julio DiNardi, who passed away on Sunday surrounded by his family. He had been a resident of South City for eighty, over eighty-eight years. Mr. DiNardi is survived by his four sons, including Dan DiNardi, who is married to our Parks and Rec Commissioner, Friends of Parks and Rec Volunteer and Women's Club and Elks Club members, Commissioner Ruth DiNardi. We send our condolences and prayers to the family and to Dan and Ruth. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for making mention of that. And Flor, do you have any comments or requests at this point?
Just one request, like Councilmember Flores, I would like to request that we adjourn the meeting in memory of Romola Singson Raval, who lived a full life with his family here in South San Francisco. Condolences to the Raval family.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, any comments or requests at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to start off with, staff recently gave us a report about a number of units, I guess. In terms of the cadence project, he found out that 93% of the units were being rented. And that, that kind of sparked interest with me to ask if staff can look and find out what our occupancy rate is for any of the new developments. Because I think there's always been a conversation about, of our development is, you know, is it fully rented out, you know, how many, how many spaces are available? I think that's kind of an important piece of information for us to find out in terms of when we look down the road in terms of development, you know, how fast are they getting filled? And so if staff, I know it's going to be hard in terms of trying to get all the units, but maybe any of the new developments that we've been tracking, we can find out what the vacancy is in terms of those new units are. Because I think it's important for us to know, you know, are we hitting those goals in terms of when they're available? If people are actually moving in. And so it was eye opening to kind of see that 93% of the cadence residency has already been full. And so that's, that speaks volumes in terms of the numbers. And so if staff can get that information for us, I think that's very, very important.
We'll work on that and get a report to council. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, I kind of just want to kind of speak from the heart here for a second. So for the last couple of weeks, I've been really kind of heartbroken with what I've been seeing with the Asian American community. And it's been really hard to kind of see what's happening. And especially hard for me because I have two young kids and I don't know how to tell them that sometimes people might dislike you or hate you because of what you look like. And so I wanted to thank my colleagues, especially Councilwoman Nicholas, for organizing an event on Friday that will bring us together to say that hate in, in any community will not stand, especially in South San Francisco. So I, I joined in my colleagues in that effort. And I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Flores, Nicholas again, for bringing that resolution a few weeks ago that talked about how we stand against hate. And so I, it's been a while and I've kind of stayed off the social media because it's been hurting a lot lately. But I know it will get better and I know that my colleagues joined me in this effort and I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Thank you for sharing with us. I know it's not easy when you think of your children and, and what, what is happening to our friends and family and neighbors in the Asian community. When I look at some of those instances, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, personally sickened that young people of any kind can create that kind of trauma and injury to old people. Or in the case of Atlanta, you know, the violence that we're seeing, the carnage and the slaughter in Atlanta and Colorado, I mean, America is in a really dark place right now. And Mark, I wish more people that aren't focused on it so much could understand and see your reaction. And thank you for sharing that with us tonight. It's really important. Okay, I have a couple of people to remember that I'll do at the end of the meeting. So let's, let's go ahead and move along with the consent calendar.
Consent calendar, item number four, motion to approve the minutes for the meetings of February 23rd and February 24th, 2021. Item number five, Housing Successor Agency Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Item number six, report regarding a resolution awarding a construction contract to Bay City's Paving and Grading Incorporated of Concord, California for the 2020 Pavement Rehabilitation Project Number ST2104, bid number 2644, in an amount not to exceed $2,541,450, authorizing a total construction contract authority budget of $3,49,740 and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Item 6A is the resolution. Item seven, report regarding a resolution determining the continued existence of an emergency and the need to continue emergency repairs in response to the Seine Hill Diamond Fire. Item 7A is a resolution. Item eight, report regarding a resolution to amend the professional services agreement with Maes and Associates, authorizing a two-year contract extension for professional audit services for fiscal years 2020-21 and 2021-22. Item 8A is the resolution. Item nine, report regarding a resolution amending the proclamation of a local health emergency adopted pursuant to Resolution Number 35-2020 to extend the outdoor dining pilot program and provide related authorization. Item 9A is the resolution. Item 10, report regarding an ordinance adopting Chapter 10.58 of the Municipal Code to require the safe storage of firearms in, in a residence. Item 10A is the ordinance. Item 11, report regarding an ordinance authorizing the special levy of taxes within the City of South San Francisco Community Facilities District Number 2021-01. Item 11A is the ordinance.
Thank you, Rosa. Would any member of the council like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I would like to pull item number six, please, Mayor.
Okay, all right, Flor. Anyone else?
Ms. Mayor, can I pull item number 10?
Okay, number 10.
And item number nine for me, please.
Okay, number nine. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and turn to Flor and item six. We'll go over these three items and then do one, one vote on the consent calendar, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I just want, I just want to request some clarification regarding number six. I know that for this project, we are choosing the one with the lowest bid. And I would just like to request, what is, what are two examples of the bid alternative? What is in the bid alternative?
Okay, so when, when we put this project together, we had a limited budget and we decided that there are some streets that we would consider adding to the project if we had budget for it. So when we went out to bid, we separated the project into a base bid and a bid alternate. The bid alternate are streets that are located in the Sunshine Gardens neighborhood. And we are requesting that we add those streets to this project. They were not included in a previous year's pavement rehab project and we're just trying to catch up with some past due pavement rehab in that neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, and so on, on page four though, on the project budget, I just want a clarification because the contingency for construction says in the text 10%, but the value or the figures is 20%. So are we putting 10% or 20% contingency?
We are using 20%.
Okay, so the text is the one that's.
Yes, my mistake.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Flor.
Good to Mayor. Ms. Flores, can you clarify for the audience and for us how the vicinity is determined pretty much of how, which streets are going to be the ones that are going to receive the upgrade?
Well, the, the vicinity maps are, are a program that we just started, Councilmember Flores. And there are projects that are coming up in the future that are going to be following that vicinity map. Actually, the, the neighborhood maps. The, the, the streets that are on this particular project were part of a previous program where we were using a algorithm to help us come up with where it's best practice for spending our, our limited funds on our pavement rehab. And it, we use an MTC software to help us with that. So MTC allows us to use that software to, to help us decide on what, how to spend the money to be most economical and, and have the greatest bang for our buck in that program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I think, let's see, number nine was removed by Councilman Flores?
Yes, thank you, folks, for putting this together again. In, in light of everything that's happening currently, right, moving tiers really rather quickly. Definitely understand that the, the essence of this in extending outdoor dining. But currently, the language proposal says it would terminate 60 days after the lifting of either shelter in place orders or when indoor dining fully resumes. However, in the next year that we're going to be up against the yellow tier, indoor dining is going to only be allowed at 50% capacity. So my question is, are we saying that this will continue until we are possibly in the green tier? And will we ever actually really be in the green tier, right? That's a whole other point. But so is it at 100% full dining capacity and do our expectations really align on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Flores, for the question. Chris Espirito, senior planner with the Planning Division. So the expectation is to act, is to align with the green tier that is yet to be fully developed. But our intention is to give our restaurants and our businesses as much time as needed. And given the yellow tier still won't get us to 100% indoor dining capacity, we still want to make sure we have this temporary program available for them to utilize and to keep operating as safely as they can, as, you know, as needed. And we will, in the meantime, as we move towards 100, if we can get to that hopeful stance of 100% indoor dining again, that's when we would then shift the program or phase out the program and, and then be more selective in what we want out on our streets in terms of outdoor dining.
Sure, I appreciate the optimism, but honestly, you know, who knows if we will ever get to the green, right? The green 100%. The other question that I had is, on the staff report, it said that staff is proposing to include additional performance measures. Can you give, give me some insight as to what those measures will be?
Certainly, just additional performance measures as in making, because we had, we were figuring out the program as we went along with the pandemic. So in the initial conditions and performance measures, we, we, we didn't figure out until later on that we needed specific widths in our drainage for those platforms that everyone built. Because the intention at the beginning was that people will just set up tables there on the, on the, on those spaces. But given the, the multiple slopes on Grand Avenue and other locations, the platform was necessary. And that's what most of the businesses in downtown have, like, that's the path that they have taken. So we're, you know, making sure that we have those conditions to make sure you have adequate drainage in, in case the rain comes in, to set specific conditions if it is a bar or something like that and to, and to prohibit outdoor music and, and live events and things of that nature. So just to make sure we have that as conditions that we didn't have before.
Understood. And last question, Chris. Curious to know, have there been any ABC violations or complaints from those establishments with regard to either liquor license or wine and beer license or anything like that?
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. No, we got to the point where when we, we were aware of any ABC violations, we never issued them a permit to begin with.
Great, good, good to know. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilman. And I think Councilman Coleman, questions on item 10?
Yes, so with item 10, and you're considering the recent gun violence that our country is experiencing in Boulder, Colorado, I believe that we should make the language of this ordinance stronger. The current language states that if the city establishes a free trigger lock program, that the city will provide the trigger lock with the warning for first violation. But I wanted to ask my colleagues if we could amend the ordinance to include the gun lock program and say the city will establish a free trigger lock program in which the city will provide a trigger lock with the warning of, of a first violation. And so I do believe that at the last meeting, there was a consensus, a consensus on need for a gun lock program. So this would just be a way to guarantee that we have such a program put in place as long as this ordinance is in effect. I was also made aware that we could pass the ordinance as is and move to pass a resolution in a future meeting, amending the fee budget to include that gun lock program. So I wanted to bring this up and ask my colleagues what, what they would prefer.
Okay, very good. Any initial response to Councilman Coleman on his request?
I, I do recall that there was mentioned that there was going to be a program be put in place, the trigger lock program. So I, I, I would be for, I guess, removing the if because I think we, we have it already. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one point is that if the council wants to revise the ordinance tonight, you'll not be able to adopt it under the rules for ordinance action. You'll have to reintroduce it. It'll come back at the first meeting in April for adoption. So it would just, it would delay the effective date for the ordinance by about three weeks.
Sure.
Additional three weeks past the 30 days, I just want to clarify.
How long does it take for the amendment?
I, I've got some wording that I could give you tonight. So you'd be able to make the change, but then instead of adopting the ordinance tonight, you'd have to reintroduce it and then it would come back at the meeting in April for second reading and adoption.
And, and the other option is that we could adopt this tonight and then, and then the program begins. And I guess, Councilman Coleman, I, I need to understand the struggle with the if and, and what you're trying to, you know, prevent and/or achieve. Do you want to delay this?
Yeah. I do not, is it possible to waive the first reading and pass it with that slight amendment or?
It's, it's not. So, no, the, the, so the, the ordinance adoption process has a mandatory two steps. You have to do two readings. The first reading, you introduce the ordinance. The second reading, you adopt it. So you introduce the ordinance at the last meeting. If you make changes tonight, it will have to be reintroduced and then you'd be able to adopt it in April. That would add three weeks to the, to the process of going back.
So the reason I brought this up was because I saw that with the if clause that potentially in the future that a gun lock program would be removed and then individuals would, would get a warning and they would not be provided with the lock as initially intended, this ordinance would be in the last meeting. And so we could amend the ordinance or we could also pass a resolution, maybe at a future meeting, requiring the police department to include in its budget a provision to provide gun locks to. a provision to provide gun locks to residents who need it.
Yeah, I think I would support you on the latter mechanism where we actually adopt tonight and we follow it up so that we are certain that there's a, you know, that we're going to have a gun lock provision where we're making it was available. Any other councilperson?
I, you know, I agree with the mayor that I would like to pass it today and make the changes next.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think just to have the policy in place is we should do tonight and then come back and enforce it with a stronger language, as what Councilmember Coleman has asked. But if I can ask quickly to Captain Campbell, in terms of the gun locks, so maybe walk me through this really quickly in terms of the process. So if someone violation of the ordinance, would you automatically just offer them a gun lock if there was a gun lock available? Or because that language says if, it's still kind of an option at the moment?
Yeah, our, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Nagales. Our intent is to provide the gun lock if the individual does not have one for themselves. They may just not be using it at the time. We are ready to make the purchase, actually, once it's adopted tonight. It does take 30, 30 days to go into effect. However, we should receive these gun locks in the next few days. And if we do come across a situation prior to the 30-day adoption, we are going to go forward and provide these gun locks. Our full intent, as mentioned before, is to keep our city safe, to keep our children safe and those with mental health conditions. So this program will be in effect very shortly, and we plan on running this program for indefinitely.
Okay, so I think that, you know, I mean, I know that when you state it's the intent and it will be the policy, and that's important for today. But I think the councilman is right to point out that, that, you know, moving ahead at some point, he wants to make sure that it's, you know, part of the resolution. So but for tonight, with that explanation on number 10, can we get a motion to approve the consent, as it stands?
So moved.
A motion? In a second, and we'll go ahead with a roll call.
Vice Mayor Nagales?
Aye.
Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to a public hearing, item number 12, report regarding conducting a public hearing on the city's housing, community, and economic development needs for the city's Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan, introduced by Community Development Coordinator Chris Romasanta.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I have to recuse myself from this item as Project Sentinel is one of the grantees of the CUV grant. So I will.
So you get to, you get to take a break.
Take a break.
Go to the kitchen and.
Eat a sandwich, you know.
How do we communicate to you that we're back?
Mr. City Manager, if you can let me know. I appreciate that.
Great. Okay, Mark.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Chris Romasanta. I'm the Community Development Coordinator with ECD. I'm here to provide a brief introduction to this public hearing. The city will be receiving $500,565 in Community Development Block Grant grant funds for program year 2022. So this is the second year of a two-year grant cycle. And in order for the city to receive CDBG funds, we are required to hold two public hearings. So this is the first public hearing to assess the community economic and development needs of the city, which will subsequently inform our annual action plan. The testimonies we hear tonight will be incorporated into the plan. And then on April 28th, we'll come back to council to approve the funding recommendations and the annual action plan. In addition, grant recipients of the Housing Trust Fund will also be making public comments as the CDBG and Housing Trust Fund grantees are on the same cycle. Nonprofits here tonight will make brief comments about their programs, the impacts that they have had on the city and their achievements. I just wanted to thank all of the nonprofits who serve our low-income community for all of their hard work, especially this past year, for stepping up and adapting during this really hard time. Thank you for all that you do.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Oh, and before we start hearing from the people, making requests, I need to open the public hearing. So now it's open, and we can begin with who's first. Rose, are you going to be calling on the individuals or?
I believe Chris has a list of the participants for tonight, so she'll be calling them out.
Okay, all right.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
You know what I? Okay, let's have, are all the panelists, are they on? Okay. Hi, Melissa. We'll have Melissa Lukin from Rebuilding Together first.
Yes, good.
Thank you very much. My name's Melissa Lukin. I'm the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Peninsula. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comments this evening. I just wanted to start with a brief story of a woman who lost her job last year, South San Francisco resident during the COVID crisis. She's a single woman who had lived in her home for decades, reached out to us because her roof was leaking and her front door was broken, and she was concerned. We made the repairs to her roof and installed a security door so that she would be safe during sheltering in place. We all know that the best way for populations like these to stay safe and avoid contracting COVID was to stay home. Of course, in this case, as many, in many times, their homes are in states of disrepair, making them unhealthy and unsafe, particularly for elderly and folks who have disabilities. The CDBG fund supported these homeowners during this critical time, and all of our clients were from from South San Francisco, were very lower low income. With support from the program during 2020, we projected to serve 12 homes and three for our National Rebuilding Day program, and I'm happy to report that we've met those goals. And since July, we've completed nine safe-at-home repair programs in South San Francisco and have another four in the works or in progress. Our NRD program, our volunteer-run program, will be completed on a rolling basis this year, of course, dependent on the environment with respect to the pandemic. But we do expect to meet our goals again. And while the program has continued relatively unabated during the pandemic, we had to pause our volunteer-driven program, but with the extension, we're able to complete those as well. So as an essential service, our challenges, of course, were similar to many folks that you'll hear from this evening in terms of adjusting to operations during the pandemic, implementing safety standards as an essential service to prevent the transmission of the disease, and also the fact that we had fewer applicants, partly because of concerns from the part of homeowners with respect to safety and also traditional outreach methods that were not available to us. But we've been very aggressive to try to compensate for that. And we're very grateful and on behalf of the homeowners in South San Francisco that you've provided them not just with repairs, but with hope and dignity. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bernie Mallett.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Bernie Mallett. I'm the Executive Director of the Ombudsman Services of San Mateo County. And I want to first and foremost thank all of you, city manager, city council members, the city, the city mayor, your staff, on behalf of all the residents that we monitor in South San Francisco. We check on 63 facilities, which equals 776 residents. These residents are in long-term care facilities, residential care, adult day, developmentally disabled residents, and also ICF nursing homes. These people are those that a lot of us don't like to talk about a lot because they are the ones who really need your help, and you are providing it. We were able to make 120 facility visits between July 2020 and March 2021, when we got shut down. We were also able to make 270 assistant calls to staff and to the administrators and 133 calls to individuals. What we were doing when the pandemic hit, we were not allowed to visit the facilities. But then in September of this year, or 2020, rather, we were able to resume some of our visiting because we were given by the state of California, the PPE equipment that we had to wear, which were the masks, the plastic shields over our faces, and our gowns. When we go into a facility, we do find many different things. We find self-neglect. We find family issues between the residents and their families. We find sexual abuse and financial abuse. So we investigate all of these. We investigate all of these cases for the residents and really try to bring them to a positive conclusion. We were very happy to say that we were able to bring to conclusion so far this year, 47 cases. And that is very, it was really very difficult to be able to talk to these people. We had to reinvent how we talked to these people. And the way we communicated with them was through their windows, through cell phones, iPads, pocket talkers, Zoom. And also, they would set up, sometimes in the garage, a six-foot table with two chairs, and the people would have their masks on, and we would have. I want to thank you all for your financial support because without your financial support, we're not able to maintain the quality of these people's lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernie. Next speaker we have is Laura Fenuki of Hip Housing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to present you information about Hip Housing's program this evening. If you've driven on Highway 101 northbound from Woodside Road in Redwood City, you might have seen a giant billboard advertising Hip Housing's home sharing program. And one of our new South San Francisco home sharing providers saw the billboard. And after she saw it a second time, she said, I think it's a sign for me to call Hip Housing. And that's what she did. The home provider has been a longtime renter in South San Francisco, and she works for the county of San Mateo. We introduced her to one of our home seekers who needed to find housing because her landlord decided to sell the property. The home seeker works as a teacher in South San Francisco and was thrilled to find a home sharing arrangement in South San Francisco close to her work. And by home sharing, she was able to reduce her housing costs to 24% of her income. You know, the pandemic has had a chilling effect on the home sharing program, not only for Hip Housing, but also for all the other home sharing programs throughout the country. Home providers have concerns about renting to an individual who has unstable income due to reduced work hours or unemployment or being home all the time, working remotely. A lot of our adult, older adult home seekers who once took on a second job to supplement their income didn't do so because most of those jobs really required them to be facing the public and put them more at risk. But the good news is that 50% of the clients that we've matched so far in this fiscal year are from South San Francisco. So it's been really busy for us in South City. A retired social worker, a teacher, United Airlines mechanic, a security guard, that ex-clerk, a dental assistant, and San Mateo County employee and retired seniors. We were also able to provide for South San Francisco home sharing clients with emergency relief funds to help pay for their rent and basic necessities. We too have pivoted and doing everything virtually right now. But I was really loving to hear the story of the history of the Magnolia Senior Center. And we are really looking forward to getting back there and meeting with our clients sometime soon. So thank you again for your support.
Great, thank you so much. Next speaker we have is Amanda LeBlanc of Rape Trauma.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for opening up the comments for us. You know, every year, RTS comes before you to speak about the unspeakable child sexual abuse. And 2020 was filled with new trauma that seemed almost unimaginable, shelter in place. No matter your income level, your neighborhood, your education level, support was needed, and RTS heard from 372 South City residents during the first shutdown. I hope that along with the vaccine, our empathy for our fellow humans has grown in the past year as well, because sexual abuse and assault did not stop even as the world did. The isolation of COVID has been felt acutely by survivors and their families, many of whom have endured silently without access to outside professionals, many of whom are mandated reporters and help get disclosures. As children return to school, we expect a surge in child sexual abuse disclosures. And during shelter in place, RTS has been able to double our volunteer corps in order to meet this need. Almost a year exactly ago, RTS quickly pivoted our 24-hour crisis line advocacy, accompaniment, and counseling services to telehealth. COVID challenged our volunteers and staff advocates to become efficient, flexible case managers, working with families to access basic need services, expediting victim service needs, and needing to leverage all of the longstanding relationships with our other South City grantees in order to meet the needs of the residents. RTS and survivors continue to count on the support given, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Our next speaker is Rachel, a service of CID.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Asubaros, and I'm with Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities. I am CID's Housing Accessibility Modification, HAM for short, Program Coordinator. A little bit about CID, our mission is to provide support services, community awareness, and system change advocacy to promote full and equal community integration and participation for people with disabilities here in San Mateo County. CID's Housing Accessibility Modification Program helps with the installation of grab bars, railings, stair lifts, ramps, handheld showers, and other modifications for low-income individuals with disabilities. These modifications improve accessibility, increase safety, and assist individuals with disabilities to remain at home or to return home with greater independence. The COVID-19 crisis has increased the needs of individuals with disabilities and/or the senior and elderly to be able to stay in their own home. All who reach out to us call for their need of relief from restriction on their lives. Some of these restrictions have forced individuals forced individuals into group homes and/or senior facilities, or these restrictions could have caused injuries that would have landed individuals in facilities on our hospitals. These places were increases the chances of individuals contracting COVID. We have served families that now have peace of mind to bring home their family members from rehab facilities, knowing that their homes are safer because of these modifications. We have installed stair lifts to an individual's home, making it easier to stay home instead of moving into group homes and individual's facility. We are also very proud to present that we have exceeded our 2020-2021 goal of serving five households in South San Francisco with our current funding by completing 13 projects for six households. And in addition, we are left over funding. We're projecting to serve about two or three. We're projecting to serve about two or three more households, um, by the end of the fiscal year. So on behalf of CID's, um, and HAM and many individuals that benefit from our services, we thank you for all your support and for letting CID present and for your continued support. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, the council have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, the next speaker that we have is Jill Morris of Cora.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here today and I apologize for my barking border collie. She's been quiet all night except for right at this moment. Uh, I am the interim executive director at Cora, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse. We are a free of charge, trauma-informed client service, client-centered service agency in San Mateo County for domestic violence victims and their children. We offer, um, our safe house offers emergency shelter and crisis support survivors who are fleeing an abusive relationship, um, and in emergency basis. So they may have called the police, they may called our hotline, um, and they come to us. Sometimes we get those calls in the middle of the night. Some of these situations can be lethal as well. So we are really, um, providing services to people who are in immediate danger and crisis. We are able to provide services at our facilities. And virtually now because of COVID, we've had to change the way we operate. And we provide mental health services, um, legal assistance and court, um, assistance, filing paperwork. We also help with advocacy services around housing. So once a client may come to us and need emergency shelter, then we can help them find their, uh, their own housing. So we provide supportive housing and rental assistance as well. As you could imagine during the time of COVID, um, and we have seen a lot of barriers that our clients have been facing, a lot of challenges. They lost their job, their childcare, children weren't in school. And many of our clients were stuck at home with their abuser. They could not get out of the house. They could not necessarily call 911 or the hotline to seek services. So very intense situations for our clients. We've seen because of the loss of their jobs, um, they lose their housing as well. And they've come to us and have stayed with us for many, many weeks, even months longer than our clients normally stay. And it's been essential for them to stay with us to get services in order to stabilize their lives. So very grateful to the city council, Mr. Mayor and everyone who supports, um, the work of Cora and all the other wonderful agencies that are here tonight. So thank you so much on behalf of our agency and our clients.
Thank you so much. I, um, our next speaker is, if we have Ortenzia Lopez on the phone of El Consilio.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor Diego and council members Coleman, Flores and Nicolás. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Ortenzia Lopez. I'm the executive director of El Consilio of San Mateo County. El Consilio is a 501(c)(3) community-based organization committed to increasing educational and employment opportunities and ensuring access to quality of life services for underserved residents of San Mateo County. Annually, we accomplish this through our family individual support that addresses food, housing, utility and digital insecurities, our health and wellness, which is mental health and alcohol, tobacco and drugs, consumer protections, assisting with utility disconnects and reconnects and telecom products abuses, and enrollment into affordable internet, as well as recently with COVID, we have been doing COVID-19 outreach, referral to testing resources and now working with vaccine. And our last one is the environmental programs, which is energy savings assistance, energy, water, education, installation of conservation solutions at no cost to eligible residents. The Peninsula Minor Home Repair, which is the project we are with you before today. Happy Home Connect and Outreach and Education on the Peninsula Clean Energy at a lower cost. And now recently, the Time Abuse, whereas of October 2020, continued through 2022 eligible customers will begin moving to the Time of Rate Plan. And customers need to understand the implications of hours of high peak of four to nine is the most costly in the grid, which means the more you use, the more you pay, so prices will increase. And we need to educate our community on learning what options they may have to decrease this increase cost. I want to thank you for your continued support of our Peninsula Minor Home Repair that helps residents on fixed incomes stay in their homes by providing minor home repairs that they cannot afford. This addresses the housing crisis. As well, we leverage services like energy, water conservation solutions for residents on fixed assets of South San Francisco to decrease energy, water burden and have savings in utility bills and improve their indoor air quality that impacts health. We want to note that in light of COVID-19, more children are attending school via remote and adults working remotely has increased the use of energy and water. For South San Francisco, uh, this past year, we completed or outreach education to over 100 residents. And we provided direct different services of the ones I le- talked about leveraging for over 30 customers. As shared, um, by my colleagues, shelter in place has impacted most service providers, including El Consilio. Today, we have completed three or four in the pipeline to complete our goal of seven for this year. And 20 year, 20 other clients have received energy savings assistance or utility and telecom assistance. I'd like to share a client that we helped, uh, with all their services. Was an elderly lady living, living in South San Francisco. And we helped her with her energy and water education and conservation solutions and home improvements, particularly with energy mother. I thank you for your support and.
Ortenzia, you can, you can finish. Tell us, finish the story.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, well, my pleasure.
It's an elderly lady was, uh, needed assistance with energy water burden. And she was enrolled in the Peninsula Minor Home Repair Program to receive new windows in her mobile home as well as a new soap top. Her old windows were single painted and very old and drafty. We completed the weatherization through the Energy Savings Assistance Program, where she received new light fixtures, door weather stripping, shower heads, faucet aerators, utility gaskets and a safety test for carbon monoxide. She was ecstatic for this help and could not believe the difference in health, comfort and safety. And since the work has been done, the savings in her utility bills. She shared with the Consilio that she was very pleased with the work completed and extremely grateful. As an elderly woman living by, all by herself with very little money, she sees this help as a wonderful gift. We respectfully respect consideration for another year of support and appreciate the partnership with the city of South San Francisco. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening.
Ortenzia, always a pleasure.
Nice to hear from you, Mayor.
Yes, I was just saying, it's always nice to see you. Tonight I have to be satisfied with hearing your voice, but that also is a pleasure. So have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ortenzia. Our next speaker is Madison Priest of the United Way of the Bay Area.
Hi, excuse me. Um, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, um, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Madison Priest and I'm speaking on behalf of United Way Bay Area and our 211 Information and Referral Service. 211 is a free confidential and vital service that connects callers with health and human services in their community. Since the beginning of the pandemic, 211 has provided residents with essential information about the virus and local services that can help callers withstand the COVID, COVID severe economic effects. 211 is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week and in over 150 languages. You can call or text 211 or use our website, 211bayarea.org. And 211 is for everyone, um, someone who is suffering from food insecurity or housing instability, an adult looking for transportation for their elderly parent or a family who needs support following a crisis or a natural disaster. Instead of multiple calls that can lead to dead ends, 211 callers reach a trained specialist who assesses the full scope of their needs and matches them with the right services. Over the course of this past year, 211 has been serving the needs of South San Francisco residents. In just the first half of FY21, we fielded 1,854 calls and texts from city residents. And this is compared from the 300 we projected for the entire year on the basis of the previous year's numbers. So these numbers have really gone up for us. When you combine COVID-related needs with other needs, the top five needs for the city of South San Francisco were in order, testing site information slash availability, healthcare, housing, general COVID information and foods and meals. Of South San Francisco callers who answered our demographic questions, most, 43% were Hispanic slash Latino and 63% were women. We've shared additional demographic information with the, um, city of San Francisco, South San Francisco. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you're interested in learning more. The increase in the number of South San Francisco calls goes hand in hand with a general increase throughout our six area counties. During COVID, we've been experiencing anywhere from two to three times the call volume when you're comparing kind of month to month, year over year. As a result, in 2020, 211 Bay Area answered 96,850 calls and texts, providing over 100,000 referrals. We're really proud of the impact that 211 has been able to have during this incredibly difficult year for so many in our community. And we want to thank you very much for your support today and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Madison. Uh, the next speaker we have is Daniela Gui- Guien of Legal Aid.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members and South San Francisco Residents. My name is Daniela Guien and I am a proud South San Francisco resident and community member. I am also a paralegal representing the housing team of the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. Legal Aid Society is deeply appreciative of our longstanding partnership with South San Francisco and particularly of the innovation and focus that staff and council members have applied to housing stability issues during COVID. The housing team at Legal Aid has seen a roller coaster of eviction activity over the past year. As the county implemented an eviction moratorium between April and August 2020, the courts were close to eviction case and the state passed restrictions on certain types of evictions starting in September 2020. All of these changes had the fortunate effect of reducing the number of traditional court cases for eviction, but created a great deal of confusion among tenants about what they needed to do to protect themselves and by when. We've worked hard to get informational materials out into the community, hosting webinars and training staff at our partner agencies on these new laws. Like most of our partner agencies in direct services, we have needed to adapt our service models so we could be safely accessible to tenants in need. We conduct all consultations by telephone or via Zoom and follow-up resources such as forms, legal summaries or referrals provided by mail, email, text, or even by drive-up delivery at our Legal Aid Office parking lot. As the Tenant Relief Act has been renewed, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program launches and eviction courts are fully open and resuming lockout activity. Our work on the horizon is to implement these tenant protections to preserve individual tenancies. We expect to see a significant spike in court eviction defense work in 2021 and a continued need for our outreach and education efforts. We appreciate the support of South San Francisco in this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniela. Um, I think we have our final speaker. And if you, if you're not considered a panelist, um, please raise your hand and then they could promote you as a panelist. Cecilia Chu is now going to be, um, going to be, she has a presentation.
Oh my gosh. Hello. Hi, I'm so sorry. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My computer literally Zoom just crashed on my computer. I had a slide deck, but I will do it verbally. Um, sorry about that. I did have like everything prepared, so hopefully, um, Chris can send that out to you guys afterward. Um, oh my goodness, I'm on my phone. So anyway, I'll start now. So challenges our youth are facing. We serve kids that are under extreme poverty. They deal with immigration fears, all the isms, violence, alcohol and drugs, unstable housing. And especially with COVID-19 right now, with distance, distance learning, a lot of them are undergoing, you know, social isolation and not being able to connect with not only their peers, but with others. We have three programs. We've been running our one-to-one program since 1979 and it's really been a bridge to communities. So, um, a lot of our mentors come from like tech and finance in the Bay Area and we connect them to low-income youth and kind of help them, uh, guide them throughout their one year and put ideally like years after. So some of our mentorships actually lasted like 20, 30 years. Our group program started in 2016 and we actually started it in Redwood City School District, as well as Sequoia Union High School District. And we are looking to expand into South San Francisco now, actually. So we are talking to, um, schools, middle schools and ideally one high school in South San Francisco. And our third program is the Whole Health for Youth Initiative. We partner with, um, five other local organizations. And what we do is we are trying to reduce duplicative services, increase and share best practices. And our 2020 impact looks like, so this year we made 48 one-to-one matches. We made 30 group matches and we support 37 waitlist kids. So that's over 115 new kids. Um, and that doesn't even include the case management that we have done for families. So since the start of the pandemic, we've had to work with families on eviction notices. We've had to work with families on getting, um, back into school, getting technology to be able to do distance learning in the first place and mentoring as well. Um, and then really just helping them get connected to not only COVID education, but resources, vaccination sites, um, as well as, uh, testing opportunities. And so we are also still connected to 218 alumni mentors and mentees. And over the lifetime, we've been around for 42 years, we've made over 2,500 matches. So one to outcomes. Actually, I will skip that because I have a minute. So from our mid-year group mentoring survey, because this is where I really want to push, because this is where I want to expand into South San Francisco to serve more kids and do more impact. 100% of our mentees in our group programs in our schools said that their mentors helped them deal with their challenges and emotions. 100% felt students in group sessions supported each other. 96% of our student mentees felt happier and more positive since meeting with their group mentors. And 90% of our mentees felt that the Friends Free Group Mentoring Program helped them feel more connected to their school. And some quotes from our groups, um, what did you like most about the Friends Free Group Mentoring Program feelings? Being able to connect with people and doing something. I like how we got to meet each other. We had fun. I really loved it. Anything you'd like to thank your mentors for, for taking the time to do this, for helping us with their feelings, for making me laugh. And so I pushed this because as we come out of COVID-19, um, the need for human connection is all the more important. Thank you.
A nice, nice job. You didn't, you didn't really need the, uh, the slides and such, so it came across strong. Nice, nice effort. Was that our last?
Yeah, I think that's our last speaker. That's on the panelist list. If there's somebody who's, um, public, on public comment, please raise your hand so we can promote you to the panelist list. If not, I, um, Cecilia is the last speaker.
Okay. Any members of the public out there with hands up? So, um, do any members of the council have questions for any of the applicants?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And I, I think it's more directly to, to, to staff or to Chris, actually. Thank you, Chris, for putting all this together. Really well done. And thank you, everyone, for, um, speaking up. And also thank you to the committee, um, council member. Uh, thank you, Chris, uh, for putting all this together. Really well done. And, and thank you, everyone, for, um, speaking up. And also, thank you to the committee, um, council member, Nicholas and, and council member, uh, James. Thank you for, for your work on this. Um, my question was a little bit about, the IEP collaborative I saw in the table on the staff report. Um, was there a, a challenge or, or something that happened with that, um, uh, grantee?
Yeah, so the challenge was that, so they had a very difficult time, um, with their one-on-one workshops. Um, so essentially, they, they helped developmentally, um, disabled or chill kids or teenagers or transitional age, kids go through the IEP process. So on the spectrum. And I think one of their challenges was actually meeting one-on-one due to COVID, and they had had applied prior to COVID, and they received full funding, but now that they're in their first full year, they've had a lot of, um, difficulty in terms of qualifying residents with income verification and going through that whole process. So we've encouraged them to apply for the next, for next year ramp, next year's round. Um, so they're, they're absolutely welcome to apply.
Great. Yeah, I just saw that zero percent on that. And on that note, um, this is my, my last question is, i- i- is there a concern that those agencies that are meeting less than the twenty-five percent mid-year percentage goals, um, will not be able to meet their targets come end of grant year? I think there were about two that I saw that are, are less than twenty percent. So, and if, 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 I, I wouldn't want to see them go the same way that IEP collaborative. I'm, I'm wondering, is there, you know, um, support or technical assistance that we can further provide to ensure that they do meet those goals?
So I think last year, last year was, um, was a special year, and there's a lot more flexibility with HUD in meeting goals, and there's more flexibility with us as well. And so whatever we could do to help support, um, our grantees, we will provide that, but also having some explanation and justification, because this is, um, like I said, it's been challenging, and a lot of these grantees are long, longstanding, um, grant recipients. And so we know what their track record is, and if, if they are having a hard time, we do adjust their, they, they set their own goals. So we can adjust those goals mid-year if, if that's what we need to do.
Great. Thank you for that. And also want to acknowledge, uh, the forethought of Councilwoman Nicholas and Councilmember, uh, Coleman, in making Irish Town Green a priority for public improvement as part of these funds, too. Very important. We desperately need, uh, new active open space here in, in our community. Thank you. Thank you, Chris, again. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Flores. Now we'll move on to the committee. Um, would either one member of the committee like to, uh, weigh in at this time?
It has always been a pleasure for me to be participating as a part of the subcommittee for this, because, uh, this is really how we know we can help our community through the nonprofit, and thank you, Chris, for, uh, helping us out, and this is really a wonderful, uh, part of the, being a city council member, I think.
Very good. Yeah, any thoughts on this, Councilman Coleman?
Yes, um, I think this is really great thing, you know, such a wide variety of services that we can provide our residents. And I'd like to thank city staff also for making this possible, and especially for, you know, making the entire budget work and also allowing us to create more open space through the, the project Irish Green. I think that this is a very, very good year for CBG. And thank you, Councilmember Nicholas, for, for working with me on this. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So I'll go ahead and, um, uh, close the public hearing, which I could have done earlier, and, uh, it was a pleasure in council on this.
Is there?
Because we are looking for a motion.
I'm happy to make the motion, Mr., or Councilwoman Nicholas. I don't know if you wanted to.
Is, I thought it's just a public hearing right now. Is there any action?
We don't need, it's not an action item?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay.
There's, there's no action requested for this item. It's just a necessary step, um, as part of the process to hold the public hearing.
It's a process. I got that. Okay. So that, that's great. We can move on to actually item fourteen.
Oh, we may have to call Vice Mayor Nogales.
Yes, we do.
Councilman Flores, that's the beauty of being here for a little bit. I get to learn.
Mike, Mr. Futrell, have you made contact with him?
I have, and he acknowledged, so I, I expect he will be, um, signing in right now.
All right. There he is. I see him. And he's connected to audio. He's got his mic off. Good. So we're ready, Mark. We're gonna move along to, um, item fourteen.
Report regarding a resolution granting two hundred sixty thousand dollars to the San Mateo County Strong Restaurant Brewery and Winery Grant Program to fund twenty-six grants to eligible South San Francisco businesses. Item fourteen A is a resolution presented by Economic Development Coordinator Ernesto Lucero.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Ernesto Lucero, Economic Development Coordinator with this city's Economic and Community Development Department. Next slide, please. So this item asks the city council to consider the approval of a resolution granting two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the San Mateo County Strong Restaurant Brewery and Winery Grant Program. And this would fund twenty-six grants to eligible South San Francisco small businesses. Um, and just want to recognize that we have Roseanne Faust, President and CEO at Sam Seda, who's joining us this evening, who's also available to answer any questions. Next slide, please. I'll just quickly highlight, uh, that this program's providing direct support to local restaurants, breweries, and wineries with ten thousand dollar grants, uh, for those that meet the eligibility. Uh, these are going to local non-corporate establishments. Next slide, please. These are some of the eligibility criteria. So for restaurants, um, these are available to restaurants that have full-service kitchens on site, breweries that have, um, a specific ABC license with the state, wineries that have a specific wine growery, uh, ABC license. Um, all must have a physical location in San Mateo County, and, uh, these businesses, um, are not eligible if they received our, um, other, um, San Mateo Strong Grant, uh, programs that have been advertised the past year. Next slide, please. Here's how the two hundred sixty thousand dollars would augment the program. A total of forty businesses were deemed eligible for this program of those that applied, uh, with currently San Mateo Strong, uh, uh, county funding allocated to specifically to South San Francisco businesses. This amounted to, uh, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, these were for, you know, I mentioned ten thousand dollar grants, so it only, um, made it available to fourteen eligible businesses. Of the total, uh, forty businesses, this left a funding gap of the two hundred sixty thousand dollars for twenty-six businesses. Um, a lottery was planned, uh, to fairly award those grants to the fourteen businesses. However, if a city contribution could fund the remaining twenty-six, all eligible businesses that applied could be awarded the, uh, ten thousand dollar grants. Next slide, please. Uh, Sam Seda and their, and the partners did a really great job at ensuring eligible businesses had access to this program. Uh, specialized outreach was conducted in English, Spanish, Tagalog, and Chinese. Uh, once the programs concluded, um, there'll be a, a final report that'll be produced, and we'll highlight any demographic data that was collected from the grant recipients. Uh, what we do know at this point is that, uh, you know, the majority of businesses that, uh, are eligible for this program are employing, um, low-income resident, uh, residents, uh, that are low-income in San Mateo County, uh, mostly restaurants, and people that are working in restaurants. So this grants money is going towards paying payroll and rent on average. Uh, the city, I just wanted also note that the city will make every effort possible to reach out to those businesses that applied for this program but were not eligible, and hopefully we can connect them to some other funding sources. Uh, next slide, please. So again, we ask the council to approve a resolution for a city contribution of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards the San Mateo County Strong Restaurant Brewery and Winery Grant Program. Um, staff anticipates this expense to be replenished once the city receives its allocation, uh, that, uh, of the recently adopted American Rescue Plan Act funds. So that concludes my presentation, and Roseanne or myself are here to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lucero. Maybe we can hear from Roseanne if she was kind enough to join us this evening. I think I'd like to start by, um, Roseanne thanking, um, Councilman Flores, who, um, I think took a Zoom meeting where he, um, found out about this program. And so he kind of, uh, highlighted it for the city council, and it's something that I think most everyone has, uh, embraced. Well-run, um, seems to be, um, touching, um, those people in business that may need the most help. So, Roseanne, are you with us?
Yes, Mayor Adiego. Thank you very much, and thank you to Ernesto. Thank you to Vice Mayor Nogales, um, all of the council members, Councilmember Flores, Nicholas, um, Councilmember Coleman, as well as City Manager Futrell, Alex Greenwood, just all the team. So, happy to be here tonight, happy to answer any questions. We followed the same process as the small business grants from the spring. In terms of, uh, just protecting information, being sensitive, that it's very hard for folks to ask for funding when they aren't used to it at all. We actually learned a lot of lessons from the spring. We kept the initial grant application open for two weeks. We upped our outreach. We are, with the first fourteen grants that have been selected from South San Francisco, those businesses have, those restaurants, breweries and wineries, have been notified. We are asking for, uh, the additional paperwork that was clearly outlined in the communications, and we're giving them, um, through the end of the month and even longer to supply it. So we can really make sure that money gets in the hands of those that need it. Just so you know, the additional twenty-six have been deemed eligible. If the city goes ahead this evening and, uh, grants that money, those additional restaurants will be notified, and again, the same process will be followed in terms of giving them plenty of time to upload the documents. We are not asking for any financial information. Any restaurant brewery and winery have, um, there are losses, uh, simply put. They have all been through a tremendous amount in the last year, and we do not want to make this onerous. I would say the majority, over eighty percent, of the, the restaurants, breweries, and wineries applying are, um, minority, uh, immigrant women owned and, and kind of looking at that landscape. I am not at a liberty to share names, and it's the way that we handled the spring, because until they actually receive the grant and sign off, that we can publicly announce that they've received a grant, we are protecting their privacy. There were thirteen additional restaurants, breweries and wineries in the city of South San Francisco that applied that did not make the first cut. So for the first, uh, X number, well, fourteen, they were all selected by a random lottery. It was very carefully monitored. And so I just want to assure you that the money that you put forth is used in the way that we are telling you that it would be.
Thank you, Roseanne. Um, are, are there any questions? And, um, when we're ready to vote, I'd like to turn to Councilman Flores, because he kind of shepherded us through our process.
Just one quick question from, uh, from Ernesto. Uh, the forty restaurants, breweries, and establishments, um, how many percent of that are total establishments? Would you know?
So, yeah, so we, uh, we have about two hundred restaurants in the city that have a business license. However, uh, if you look at the eligibility with this program, um, it was specific to, uh, restaurants that have a full-service kitchen, and I think Roseanne mentioned some other eligibility. So, uh, it's kind of, uh, if you, if you look at it, basically twenty percent of our restaurants would be receiving this funding.
Thank you.
Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well, for acknowledging that there was this opportunity, uh, to, to have our invited guest, Roseanne. This is outstanding. I, I want to recognize so many people, because this is essentially what teamwork and, and building partnerships is about, right? This is really a, a good issue to have, right? When we have over, um, applicants, uh, of the number, and I'm, I'm mostly, um, even more pleased that the community, it really highlights, right, the, the real strong need that is out there. That's the unfortunate part, but the, the good part is that these people were able to feel safe enough in the application process, which, again, I applaud you and your team at Sam Seda, Roseanne, for making it, uh, lessons learned from your previous iteration and, and putting that forethought in to make it successful, as, as we have seen. Um, I, 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 again, thank you all, Mr. City Manager, um, ECD team, everyone, for, for bringing even this innovative idea that I now saw that now on the paper this morning, that other cities are helping combine to meet the needs of, of the non-lottery winners, if you will. Ernesto, I did have a question, just more specifics, uh, so that people out there here, uh, these two hundred and sixty thousand are not coming from our general fund. Is that correct?
Uh, they are not coming from any money that the general fund was already appropriated, so, um, it's already money that was budgeted in the, in the city, and, uh, we anticipated fully being reimbursed, um, and it'll, would come to council next month, or soon, shortly.
Terrific. And out of these applicants, do you know how, uh, how many were, um, potentially funded during the, our first internal South City, uh, grant, uh, for businesses? Uh, is there some that might have applied before, or, or is there completely new? Do you know any of that?
Uh, I do know that, um, of the, of the businesses that received funding from the city, there were twelve restaurants. So it could be possible that, um, one of these restaurants that received our funding could be receiving this funding, but, um, you know, looking at these restaurants, they received funding almost ten, nine months ago, so, um, uh, it really is a drop, drop in the bucket to the, to the business.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. Again, thank you, Roseanne, for being here, for your time, for, for, you know, putting all this together with our, our city staff team. Again, thank you.
So Councilman Flores, it sounded like you were on the, on the cusp of a motion.
I'm happy and delighted to make this motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor? The second by, thank you, Flor. Rule call.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nogales?
Yes.
Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Moving on to item number.
Go ahead.
Item number seventeen, report regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the State of California and CCG and authorizing budget amendment twenty-one point zero four six to fund the city of South San Francisco Smart Corridor Expansion Project, project number TR two zero zero two, construction phase, item seventeen A is a resolution presented by Senior Civil Engineer Bianca Lu.
So, Rosa, I have to ask, um, we stepped over fifteen and did something occur that I wasn't aware of, or?
No, we are on item fifteen. Let's go back.
Okay, all right.
Report regarding adopting. Are we good?
Yes.
Report regarding adopting a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with the County of San Mateo for a Small Business and Entrepreneurship Center in South San Francisco. Item fifteen A is a resolution presented by Economic Development Coordinator Ernesto Lucero and Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development Department, Nell C. Lender.
Good evening again, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilor Ernesto Lucero, Economic Development, uh, Development Coordinator with the, um, ECD Department. Uh, next slide, please. This item asks the city council to consider a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the County of San Mateo on implementing a new Small Business and Entrepreneurship Center that to be located in South San Francisco and to serve as a North County center. Next slide, please. Here's just a little background. On February twenty-third, the city council held a study session to discuss two different economic mobility initiatives, uh, one on workforce development, one on this Small Business Assistance Center. This item is strictly talking about the Small Business Center. On March third, uh, we On March 3rd, we received, or RFQ closed, and we received some mittels to that, which I'll briefly explain on the next slide. And then March 9th, the County of San Mateo Board of Supervisors approved an appropriation of $200,000 towards a North County Center. Through our RFQ process, we received three responses from Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, RETHB, and the San Mateo County Energy Watch. Since earlier this month, though, the city and county have been meeting on this project and determined that Renaissance would be the preferred contractor for the center based on their experience. Renaissance as the main service provider for the center would be providing small business technical assistance, training, and business incubation opportunities for small businesses. Next slide, please. One more. So after the Council Board of Supervisors approved that appropriation of $200,000 earlier this month, we started to work on a draft MOU, which is before you at this time. So the terms of the MOU include a one-year pilot program with the county on this MOU. We'll be sharing costs, hard costs for the center such as rent, and then sharing costs on the Renaissance service provider contract. And this would be a contract between the city and Renaissance specifically. We do talk about in the MOU some targeted businesses, which I think we mentioned in our last study session. And it is kind of spelled out in the MOU where we define small businesses as 50 employees or fewer, or less than $5 million in annual revenues, with the county funding reserves specifically for 10 employees or fewer, or 2.5 million in annual revenues. So we have two different definitions of small businesses, but we'll kind of see how that plays out and how much the services are used. Businesses must have a valid business license. The contractor will target hard-to-reach businesses. I think we mentioned this in our last study session. So non-English-speaking businesses, businesses that are not online or don't have an online presence or access to technology. And then, South San Francisco businesses and residents will be given an opportunity to pre-enroll. Many programs that the center will be offered, so there'll be some prioritization on that. Next slide, please. So staff's going to return in April with a more detailed scope of work with Renaissance through a contract. Will also include a detailed budget for appropriation, an implementation schedule. One thing I do want to note, as some background, that the County of Board of Supervisors did approve this MOU this week, just as additional information. Next slide, please. Just to summarize, this item is specific to the MOU with the city and the county, and asks the council to approve the resolution authorizing this MOU. And we just want to also mention, we have Sharon Miller, CEO of Renaissance, and Tim Russell, who are available to answer any questions on the service provider side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucero. Any questions from the council, or Mr. Lucero, or the Renaissance people? It looks like we're...
I just had a kind of one point. Is there an opportunity? I know that it says in the staff report that metrics will still be negotiated upon the contract, and that a number of businesses in South City will get priority, and also a preference given to SSF businesses. But I'm curious, is there going to be perhaps an actual percentage or a number of how many SSF businesses will get priority? Since this will be a very, what I think will be a popular county program?
Sure. So we anticipate that the majority, initially, the majority of people using the center are going to be South San Francisco businesses and residents, just due to the proximity within, in the city. We're in the middle of negotiating that scope of work with Renaissance, and we will definitely, the council will obviously have another opportunity to weigh in on that contract once it gets presented next month. But that is definitely our priority. We want to make sure that South San Francisco residents and businesses are able to use the services.
Thank you.
If I could also answer and reassure council, we'll be watching that closely. And to the extent that the scales may tip, I'll be back in Redwood City talking to the county manager, saying they need to provide us more funding. And I've made that clear. So we definitely want to balance out the work with the funding that's provided, but certainly not shy about continuing a larger collaboration with county, if necessary.
And it's certainly good to take care of our interests first, but we don't need, I don't think we need to be overly parochial, because there are some, you know, great benefits in having a center located in South San Francisco, maybe in the core of South San Francisco, if we're fortunate, and having businesspeople from other communities become aware of what South San Francisco is all about, and potentially some opportunities here. So I think there's an upside, no matter where they come from. Any other questions? Pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. To adopt, and a second by Councilman Coleman, roll call on item 15.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nogales?
Aye.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
That brings us back to 17, Rosa.
Report Regarding a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Agreements with the State of California and CCAG in Authorizing Budget Amendment 21.046 to Fund the City of South San Francisco Smart Corridor Expansion Project, Project Number TR-2002, Construction Phase. Item 17A is a resolution presented by Senior Civil Engineer Bianca Lu.
Thank you. IT, would you mind going back to the first slide? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Bianca Lu, Senior Engineer, and I am here today to present the South San Francisco Smart Corridors Expansion Project. Tonight, I am recommending that city council adopt a resolution to accept grant funding from CCAG and Caltrans to fund the construction phase of the project. Next slide. To start with some background, the original concept of this project came from the countywide Smart Corridors Program managed by CCAG. The program was formed as a regional effort to manage congestion and improve mobility in San Mateo County through the installation of traffic management equipment and electronic message signs to monitor and address real-time traffic and alert drivers of upcoming traffic conditions, including accidents that may lie ahead. The overall Smart Corridors Program aims to keep motorists in the know so that they can plan ahead and, in turn, can help ease traffic. On the left of this slide, you'll see a map of the countywide Smart Corridors Program. This larger regional effort is planned in phases. Phases 1, 2, and 3, located between the city of San Bruno at its northern limits and Santa Clara County, have been completed. Phase 4 is our project, the South San Francisco Expansion. Phase 5 is the Northern Cities Project, consisting of Daly City, Brisbane, and Colma, which is currently in design. And Phase 6, which I did want to point out the correction noted in red, so that's Phase, it's not Phase 4, it's Phase 6, and that phase is currently not funded. Next slide. So this slide shows the Smart Corridors Route for the South San Francisco Expansion, which is designed to address incidents along 101. If there's an incident on 101, cars will naturally move off the freeway. Our goal is to discourage vehicles from cutting through neighborhoods and creating gridlock on the local streets by providing a safe route to redirect traffic around the incident. Construction is scheduled to begin this fall, and, next slide. Key features of the project will include: traffic signal upgrades, CCTV cameras for monitoring traffic, electronic message signs for route guidance, vehicle detection to monitor volumes and speeds, and fiber communication to communicate to our traffic management center located at the courtyard. Next slide. So in just a few months, I'll be coming back to you to award the construction management contract. And this summer, we're planning to award the construction contract and begin construction this fall. While South San Francisco is the implementing agency leading the construction phase and administrating the construction contract, CCAG will continue to be the project sponsor and fund the project, as well as any overrun incurred by the project. So currently, the project is estimated to cost $6.56 million, and that includes state funding and CCAG funding. So today, my recommendation is to accept the grant funding from CCAG and the state to fund the construction phase. Next slide. I would also like to thank Kaki Chang, Program Director with CCAG, who has joined us today to help answer any questions, as well as now open up for any questions that you have for Mayor Kaki. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lu. Council, any questions for our staff or CCAGs?
Mr. Mayor, it's Mark Comment. It's going to be interesting to kind of see this kind of happen in real time when this is up and running, to see, you know, potential cars now go on city streets to try to maneuver through traffic and try to hopefully not cause more traffic on city streets. So I'll be interested to kind of see, Mr. Mayor, I know you're a CCAG representative on this, and so kind of hear your thoughts, and just also other cities who are going to go through this as well, because, you know, they might, I'm sure like folks from Millbrae and San Bruno are going to probably have the same questions that we have, is when they get off the freeway, how they're going to maneuver through their city streets and not cause additional traffic that we already see on an everyday basis in the morning, especially in the downtown corridor. So I'm interested to see what happens next.
Yeah, I think we will be. You know, just a couple of days ago, I think it was two days ago, near 92, both the northbound and southbound lanes of 101 were stopped. And you can imagine all the traffic that was taking advantage of 92 to drop down into Foster City in San Mateo. And yeah, it would be interesting to see how this actually works in the real world. Any other questions for staff, any comments? If not so, we're looking for a resolution that authorizes the city manager to execute agreements with the State of California and with CCAG regarding this Smart Corridor Expansion Project.
So moved.
There is the motion, and a second by?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mark. Roll call.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nogales?
Aye.
Mayor Adiego?
Well, that takes us almost to the end of the meeting. You know, it's only a couple of minutes after 9:00. And I heard through the grapevine that some members of staff are predicting a 10:30 close. So it looks like that's not where the smart money was on this one. So the last item, Rosa?
Items from Council Committee Reports and Announcements.
Okay. Councilman Coleman, did you say that you had something that you shared at the end?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So first, I kind of want to also, it's kind of second to Vice Mayor Nogales's concerns earlier about, you know, kind of like the vacancy data. And I think that there is also a looming evictions crisis that will hit our state when attendance protections expire in June. And to my understanding, we only have data from those who have applied for rental assistance from the YMCA, which is likely an underestimate of the true need for help in our community. And to address present issues that we are facing now, as well as future crises and economic downturns, a rental registry would be very useful in targeting our outreach resources to our tenants, as well as our landlords. And it would allow us to make more well-informed decisions in order to protect and support our renters and landlords. And especially since our community is 40% composed of renters, I believe that this would be a good direction for us to go to. I know that East Palo Alto has a rental registry of their own, and it's a city size similar to us. And so perhaps our city could look at Palo Alto as a model and see if we can get something in place. And in addition to that, I have been talking to some teachers from the South San Francisco CTA. And in line with much of what the council is doing in response to anti-Asian racism, they have issued a proclamation, and they've requested that there is an agenda item for them to present their proclamation at the next city council meeting. And hoping that we could get that on the next council meeting, so they could also share their words. That being said, I also want to kind of give some comment about the anti-Asian sentiment of racism and violence. You know, for the past few weeks, it's been very hard. I felt numb at times, but this past weekend, I had the privilege of attending the Daly City Rally for Asian American Lives. I believe the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Flores was also in attendance, and this was organized by Mayor Justin Manalo in Daly City. And I also had the privilege of attending a march in San Francisco organized by GAPA. And I just want to say that, you know, with these two events, and also with a lot of the work that Councilmember Nicholas is doing, and that the council is doing, standing up for Asian lives, I think that that has been re-energizing to me. And I'm very happy to be part of a community that will stand up against all forms of racism and bigotry. And I just want to say thank you for you all, and also for others in the community who have been standing up against hate.
Thank you. Well expressed. Anyone have any other items for the end of the meeting? Okay. I just wanted to mention, because there were a few, I wanted to mention people that we wanted to close the meeting in memory of. And I'll just go over the names briefly here. So Giulio Circatini is a lifetime resident of South San Francisco. I think 88 years of age, passed away. Rose Baba, Rose was the wife of Roy Baba, who passed somewhat recently. And those were the in-laws of former Mayor Joe Fernikes, and very active in our historical society. Rudy Bertolosi, who was big in the botchi community in South San Francisco, a member of many Italian clubs, most notably the Italian-American Citizens Club of South San Francisco. And Enrico Agio, also a proud member of the IACC, and also a past president of that organization. And then a woman who is not a resident of South San Francisco, got her start on the East Coast, came to San Francisco as a young woman, was appointed many years ago by the governor to serve as the vice chair of the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission. And Watson Halsted was always a positive and bright spot on that body during the most difficult of commission discussions. And I will miss her greatly. So thank you for indulging me, and we'll send out some letters to those families. Anyone else? Okay, so I look forward to Friday, and we'll work on scheduling, Councilman Coleman. I understand we didn't keep that in mind, and it's something that we need to take care of. And we need to push things a little deeper into the afternoon.
Okay, I can skip class tomorrow.
Okay, all right, good, good. All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and close the meeting, and look forward to seeing you all on Friday.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye, everyone.